So we're going to call the meeting to order. It's 7:06. I'm joined by my colleagues, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Wallner, Mr. Studo, and Mrs. Gonzalez, and we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we're going to start with our COVID-19 update. We'll turn it over to you, Mr. Gilberto. And you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm just reading from our last update posted in the middle of last week. The town hall reopened for walk-in service on Monday, May 17th, with walk-in hours being Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. and Tuesday and Thursday from 1 o'clock p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Facial coverings are required to be worn in town hall in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' current facial covering order. Still encourage folks to conduct business online or via telephone, and information to access departments is available on the town website at www.northreadingma.gov. Flint Memorial Library is open for by appointment browsing as well as contactless pickup through the activity room downstairs of the library. Facial coverings are also required to be worn in the library in accordance with the state's current facial covering order. The O'Leary Senior Center remains open for in-person appointments by request. Folks should call 978-664-5600. I will just note that as they look to resume in-person events, there is some conversation about whether or not we'd be able to take advantage of currently available space over at the Hillview Function Facility, a larger space that might be more conducive to socially-distanced-type event. And that's something for which there is some discussion happening, and we're optimistic that there'll be some news in the coming weeks with regard to that for at least one event in June. So there'll be more to come with regard to that. I will just note the Health Department's working with North Reading Public Schools to partner with Pellmeds Pharmacy to offer optional COVID-19 vaccination sites to students aged 12 and up. And information has been forwarded by North Reading Public Schools directly to families. The most recent state public health report that we publicized was from May 13th indicated 1,430 total cases. Total case count in that period was 26. I can report that the public health nurse reported that as of this morning, we were actually monitoring 15 cases. So those numbers are certainly, I think, trending in the right direction. I think like everybody, we're awaiting some more guidance from the state with regard to the orders being lifted as of May 29th, as well as the ending of the state of emergency, which we are told will take place on June 15th. And that's really, I guess, the summary for general COVID-19 updates.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. All right, our next order of business is public comment. Do we have anyone joining us this evening that wishes to speak? If you do, please raise your hand or use the chat room. Seeing none?
Not seeing any.
Moving on to our next order of business, which is to introduce Mr. Parisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So with us this evening is our new Director of Public Works, Joe Parisi. He started with us on May 12th and has been quickly coming up to speed with many issues that are going on here in town. So first, Mr. Parisi, I see that you're on there. Welcome this evening.
Thank you. Nice to be here.
Welcome.
I will just give a little bit of background, which I previously reported to the board. Mr. Parisi brings 19 years of experience as Director of Public Works in both Gloucester and Rockport, as well as nine years in the Mayor's and Assessor's Office in the City of Gloucester. He has a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Worcester Polytechnic Institute and is also a licensed construction supervisor and a Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official. So we certainly appreciate his experience and credentials and welcome him here. He's been meeting weekly with myself, the Public Safety Director, the Finance Director, and the Human Resources Director, coming up to speed on things. And certainly, the feedback has all been good, Joe. So we're glad to have you here. While we are here, I see that the Operations Manager is here as well, Mr. Deming. Good evening. For those of you who do not know Chris, but I think everyone here does know, Chris has served as the Acting Director for nearly a year. And we are so grateful to him for his experience, for his willingness to stand into the role, and for his leadership in the department, you know, through a transition, and candidly, as I've said in many other forums, you know, Chris has been the one of the few constants, perhaps with the Water Superintendent as well, over the past seven years, six years, if we've gone through some transition in the department. And so, you know, he's a critically important part of the team. Despite his age, he often is a senior person in the room as well. You know, there were many conversations that took place over the past year where that was the case, based on his lengthy experience. And, you know, Chris, I just want to say thank you for your hard work, you know, wearing two hats for nearly a year, two very demanding hats, and the Operations Manager. You know, the community really knew the decisions that lay in your hands, you know, day in and day out, night in and night out, and how they really affect folks every day. I think they would be really, you know, I think any one of us would be potentially overwhelmed by them. So I just want to say thank you for your efforts and for your willingness to serve in that capacity, Chris.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I, you know, for Mr. Parisi, through you, Madam Chair, you know, we have quite a bit going on, as I think you've learned over the past couple of weeks and in our discussions prior to it. So, you know, we're certainly, I think we feel comfortable that we have a candidate who's able to hit the ground running and help us through, particularly when it comes to our wastewater planning initiative. I mean, that's something that really, you know, having your expertise, where we're very excited to have you here, given your experience in Gloucester and Rockport with issues related to wastewater. So I just would ask everyone to join me in welcoming Joe. And Joe, pleased to have you aboard.
Nice to be here. You know, I'm coming up to speed. It's been almost a couple of weeks now, and a lot to sort of get acclimated to. But, you know, Chris and the others have shown me around town and brought me to some of the areas that, you know, I need to be aware of, some of the projects, the buildings. And so it's been a hectic couple of weeks, but it's been good. And I'm glad to be part of the team.
Thank you. Thanks. That's great. Thank you to Chris. We really appreciate your effort and everything you've been doing. And you do join us quite a bit and help explain a lot of things to us. And you're working on so much for the town, and we do appreciate your effort. And Mr. Parisi, you'll be happy to know, we don't expect you at every meeting. So we appreciate you coming here, and I'll open it up to any of my colleagues that'd like to make any comments, or Mr. O'Leary?
First of all, just to Chris, again, you know, you stepped into a situation that you weren't necessarily anticipating, and you took it on and you handled it with flying colors. And again, everything that you did over the last year or so has been greatly appreciated from little things of the day-to-day operations, and also just jumping in as far as the wastewater issue that we've been facing. You were right there. So again, for all that you've done and all that you continue to do, it's greatly appreciated. And we're glad you're here. You're truly an asset. And Mr. Parisi, you know, welcome from Cape Ann. I mean, not too many people cross over the bridge to come up here. So it's good to have you. And I think I know your family. Parisi, you have a family well-known down in Gloucester. You're a public servant, too. And welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you and having you here.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez? Yeah, I would like to echo my colleagues. And, you know, Chris and I worked together on a few things, and I interacted with him quite a bit, and he always answered me as soon as he could, and just always a professional. And I want to thank you, Chris, for that. And Mr. Parisi, I would like to welcome you. We're happy to have you. And I think you have a great crew.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
Yeah, just, I won't repeat. I'll just say, you are inheriting a very cohesive group, and Chris had a lot to do with that. So, and I have the strong feeling that the people that work within that department really like what they're doing, and they're encouraged to keep growing within their department. So I think it's, you know, it's always felt good to me. So, welcome, and thanks so much, Chris. You know, for the few times we have talked, it's been a good exchange, and I've appreciated your leadership.
Mr. Studo?
Everybody already said everything I was going to say. So all I can say is, Mr. Parisi, welcome. And, you know, thank you for, you know, you've come to North Reading from, as Mr. O'Leary said, it is an interesting drive. So we appreciated some of your qualifications.
I'm glad to be here. Drive's not too bad, and it's a great community to be working for. I'm excited.
Well, thank you. All right, our next order of business is remote participation for public meetings and a vote to authorize. Mr. Gilberto?
Potentially, Madam Chair. You know, so, you know, we're in this sort of no-man's-land right now, so to speak, where the Governor has said he will be lifting the emergency declaration as of June 15th. The legislature has committed to, you know, looking at the many executive orders he has issued and determine, you know, which, if any, need to remain in effect after the expiration of the emergency declaration. One of them that we, this board has been very active on, and we continue to advocate, is recently last week, the Secretary of General, is with regard to the outdoor dining, the temporary authorization for outdoor dining, 60-day period ending. And I think honestly, exactly what we thought was going to happen, or could happen, is what's happening, that it's going to be, the order's lifted June 15th, and technically, the outdoor dining temporary approval would expire August 15th. And for those who have invested in the infrastructure, that's troubling and concerning. We heard directly from a restaurant owner on Tuesday last week. So, you know, that's one area that we know the legislature is working on. This particular area is probably the other that's most directly impacting local government, which is the ability to conduct virtual meetings, which, all things being equal, if the order expires, we would no longer have the ability to conduct virtual meetings. And while I believe that something will come out of Beacon Hill that may allow something of that effect to take place, you know, we don't know what that will be or when it will happen. One thing that the Select Board had discussed, and by no means had decided one way or the other on, was whether or not to allow remote participation for public meetings under a pre-existing statute that allowed for members to participate remotely. You still would be required to have, not only for the Select Board, but for any public body, a quorum meeting in a public building accessible to the public. But there is this option, the board, we're so inclined to allow for remote participation. And I do have to be upfront, you know, as I sit here today, you know, it would be probably pretty rudimentary technology we would be talking about while we're awaiting this further guidance at the state level, probably through conference call, and not even through video, and probably limited to the members of public bodies. So I don't want to sit here and profess that it's a great solution, but I do feel it was something that you just ought to be aware of as an option that's out there. And Madam Chair, through you, I know you're very familiar with it, you know, from your familiarity with the open meeting law. But I did ask the Town Clerk to join us as well, just to assist in answering any questions that might come up.
I mean, I think we probably have some, we probably have some questions, and unless we have some sort of understanding of technologically, the people joining remotely, it's my understanding, they have to be seen and heard, and they have to hear and see, and not just us, other colleagues, the five of us, but you, our clerk, whoever's joining us from the public in person. So I wouldn't know, I don't know how you, that, what is your proposal as to making that happen?
At the moment, it would only be audio that we'd be able to provide. It would not be video, at least not in any reliable way. At this stage, there would be some work that would need to be done with regard to it. And if my reading of this is incorrect, certainly the Town Clerk for yourself could correct me, but I was under the impression that we would be able to provide telephonic communication, two-way telephonic communication, where the person can hear everybody, and everybody can hear the person in the room. But we, right now, the video, I think we could get there, but I can't responsibly tell you that we're there right now, because we're just not.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions, Mr. Gilberto? Mr. O'Leary?
Well, it's to Mr. Gilberto, but also to my colleagues here. Are we looking to endorse the legislative package that the Mass Municipal Association has been advocating for, for the interim? Again, they were talking about remote meetings and hearings, you know, vote-by-mail electronic signatures for nomination papers, expedited permitting for outdoor service, takeout alcohol, and expanded local licensing authority, which again, would help address the outdoor dining. So to me, Mass Municipal Association is a collector of great amount of data and experiences from across the Commonwealth, and very thoughtful organization. And they've come up with a short list of legislative, the legislative agenda we acted on quickly, and I think we should be endorsing that, that effort. So I don't know if the administrator has had a chance to take a look at it and would opine on it.
Well, that's right. That's, I think, although this particular topic might be covered there, that isn't really something on our agenda to discuss this evening. And I would, you know, expect if that was something that we were considering, that we should have that in advance to be able to contemplate that. But in terms of just meeting, in terms of voting to do remote participation, I think, do you have any questions with regard to that, Mr. Gilberto?
No, other than it's been happening for the last year, what would be so difficult to continue that?
Why? Oh, because of the end of the, because it's...
No, but he said, you know, technologically, it's only audio. I mean, what's been happening with all the other board meetings? What would be so difficult to continue on with the methodology that's been employed for the last 14 months?
Mr. Gilberto?
Well, we don't have the legal authority to do that.
No, Mr. O'Leary is saying, we're doing it now. So what's the technological issue with just via Zoom, allowing a member to join the quorum via Zoom?
I guess we would be talking about providing, you know, staffing for the video being provided, which is something we'd have to look to do. We'll be talking about two different forms. We'd be talking about an in-person forum in Room 14, and we would then, I'm assuming you're in 14, because the other offices are being used at the moment for other purposes. But we would be talking about an in-person meeting in one setting, and then a virtual meeting in another. It's almost two meetings going on at one time. I mean, I'm not sitting here saying it couldn't be done. It's just, it's something that, you know, may be a bit more complicated. I don't want to sit here and say it can't be done. I just, we would have work to do to be prepared to do that. Right now, the forum is only in one spot. It's all virtual. With everybody having their own device, you'd be talking about mixing the two, which, again, I'm not opposed to, which just, I don't want to sit here and represent that we've got all those bugs worked out yet, because we don't.
So for a vote to authorize, how would that, because I would assume the vote that we're taking this evening on this, that that's, there's a plan in motion for that, so that a vote to authorize would allow us to just continue remote under the, you know, the way the law stands currently? So what, what are you proposing in terms of how we would be able to do that?
At the time, for the time being, it would be to allow for audio communication for a third-party board member. And that's not to say that between now and the next regular board meeting, we can't expand that. I just, this is all developed somewhat quickly, and I don't want to represent that we have that challenge solved right now, because we don't.
Because I'm, in other words, you're going to put a phone in front of someone's microphone? Is that, and then another phone for the other member in front of someone's microphone?
If that were the case, yes.
And ensure that those people can be heard by members of the public that are viewing it on NORCAMP?
Correct. For a televised meeting, yes.
Okay. So that's the, that's actually the plan?
At this stage, yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. O'Leary, any other questions?
No, other than we, we considered this proposal, what, a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Right. And I don't think it prevailed, correct? I mean, how is it?
For the same logistics, Mr. O'Leary. I think for the same, I mean, we get complaints, people can't hear us on NORCAMP. No offense to you, Mr. Healy, but we, I can't hear you. Speak up, talk louder, you know? We're pretty loud people. But, all right. Do you have any other questions, Mr. O'Leary?
No, just a comment. I'm actually in favor of it.
All right. Mr. Wallner?
A little confused with the topic, so I'll default back to the wiser ones who know what they're talking about.
Mrs. Gonzalez, questions, comments?
More of a comment. I just feel like it should be one or the other. I think it's just a bit confusing to have a phone. And, I mean, we're either going to be in person or we're not.
Okay. Mr. Studo, comments?
Well, yeah, a couple of comments. So first, I mean, I didn't expect it to happen this soon, but the last board meeting, when I mentioned, we had to start preparing for these things. And, you know, everybody was still thinking that August 1st, you know, we had till August 1st, like, you know, I wish it didn't happen this fast, but this is exactly what I was talking about, that these things were out of our control. And, you know, neither the CDC or Governor Baker really, you know, cared what Vincenzo Studo in his basement thought about it. So, but what I like to say is that, to me, I did look into it a little bit, and I spoke to a couple of people. The technology is out there. It is expensive. And without state subsidy, I highly doubt a lot of communities are going to get it. It's, it's out there. I think Reading used a form of it, and expensive is relative, right, to what we, you know, to what we spend. Also, the technology, it's a catch 22. Because if you do it, and you do it properly, you want to also try to get the public to be able to do it, right? If you want to do like a fairness. I know we're only talking about one thing here, but guess what? The same reason that we say Zoom is great, because it allows some that are more, maybe disabled or elderly that can't get to the meeting, this technology is not like the iPhone, where you touch the home screen whenever you get confused. It is not that simple. So I just wanted to state that before, you know, we get all about everyone being an expert. And I agree with Mr. Wallner. There's a lot of people better than me at this. So, but my comment, though, is I'm looking at this from a different angle. I don't support it, because I feel that this board needs to show symbolism, that we are ready to get back to business with the business community here and the people of North Reading. And I feel that we can do this safely based on the numbers. And also, because we don't have the technology at some point, so this conversation, I feel like, is way premature. Because I think, even if the state next week said, hey, we're going to let you do this remote, but you got to have the technology, yeah, we still have to figure out the trash fee. So why don't we just get in line? So the point is that I think that, for the time being, until we have technology that can, can address the issue, so it does work properly, and we don't get the hello, hello, the Verizon commercial, can you hear me now? I think that we should just go in person, do it as safely as we can, which, you know, I'm not going to sit here and rattle off the 350 numbers I have from the CDC that tells us it's safe, and just, you know, wait for spam call. Sorry, spam. So, so that's my thing. I don't support it in its current form, because when I first saw it on the agenda, I just, it took me two phone calls to people that know technology a lot better than me to tell me that even if you guys, even if you could authorize it, you don't have the technology to properly do it. So that's my comment.
So that was, I think I have, I think that's what my question would be, because I, it's already allowed under the law. And if we take a vote on this this evening, we, we better have a plan, because we're not just voting for the Select Board, we're voting for every other commission, committee, subcommittee, board, school committee, whoever else is meeting, wherever else they're meeting. So to me, it would, I'm assuming it requires some sort of specific program or software or platform for us to be able to do it. And other communities have it, and other communities have done it. So I think we should be, have that information available, because it is already allowed. And if we're going to do it, we have to put our money where our mouth is and make sure that we're prepared for it. So, but I just, I know Clerk Stats is here, too, and she loves to tell us information about this stuff, and she's our expert on this. So we're going to let Clerk Stats tell us how this can happen and how it can be compliant with the law. So please welcome Clerk Stats.
Well, I wouldn't say I'm an expert on it, because our feet aren't even wet with this. But you are right, that if you authorize this, this applies to every single board and committee, any public body, under the open meeting law. And you, as a board, are responsible to fund it for all of them as well. So you have to be prepared for that. As Mr. Gilberto said, these meetings still have to be physical in nature, with a quorum of every public body in attendance, physically in a meeting room, accessible to the public, accessible to the handicapped. So that is quite different than the Zoom meetings of the past year or 15 months, whatever it's been. I, this board, your board, has the authority to set parameters to, as to the use of remote participation that would apply to all boards and committees. I will say that the one, one board that is outside of your authority is the Disability Commission, because they have the ability to adopt remote participation even without your approval for the entire town. And that's given the nature of the composition of their board. They haven't, to my knowledge, done that yet. Nobody's informed me. But you also have to be aware that, you know, with a quorum in the room, it will up to the chair to determine who is able to participate remotely. And you might want to set parameters as to the same person or persons. If it's a five-member board, two of them can't be the same people who do not come to the physical meetings. You know, there needs to be some guidance. It's not intended to be just a convenience. It is supposed to be for particular reasons, because the open meeting law really wants people to meet transparently in public. And until there is some special legislation that deals with what we've been working under for the past year, which is virtual participation, virtual meetings, you still have to follow a lot of the guidelines for the open meeting law. There's, in a regular meeting, such as you're holding tonight, there's no requirement for public participation. Most of the public bodies will allow that, as you do normally on your agenda. But now, if you do adopt remote participation, you have to decide at your discretion, are you going to allow the public to also participate remotely? If you do, you're responsible to also have some kind of technology, as you say, that can accommodate that. Anyone in the physical room has to be able to hear anyone participating remotely and vice versa. As Mr. Gilberto said, it does not have to be an audio meeting at this point. The statute is only related to being able audibly, you know, to audibly hear everybody. So it is coming at you, you know, in a rushed fashion, as Mr. Studo said. And, but given that, you know, on June 15th, there will be no more virtual meetings, period. I checked with the Division of Open Government. There is no grace, period, as there is with the outdoor dining, perhaps. So the ability to meet virtually ends, period.
Okay, thank you. I think maybe what we need to know, I'm, you know, again, I'm only one out of five, but I think what we need to know is the cost of whatever software or programming or platform we can do, we can have to do this. I mean, because I do think it's highly likely, even though it hasn't happened yet, that they'll, other communities do it. So we need that information from you. If this is on our agenda, we need to have some firm numbers and an understanding of how to, how to achieve this, and how do other communities do it. And, and also, I think we also need to, we need to, we will probably see some change like this, because this is kind of the, this is the way people are meeting now. This is the way people are having hearings now, and public hearings and things like that. So we really also need to have a discussion as a board for those guidelines, not just vote it, but talk about it ahead of time. But that's my opinion. So do we have a vote, or do we want to table the vote for the moment? Mr. Studo?
I have one other comment. I like to piggyback. I mean, I mentioned it before, but I'd like to piggyback on something that Stat said, that I think that if we adopt it, we should not do it unless the public can do it, too. I mean... I mean, us deciding that, you know, that the boards of North Reading get to, you know, sit up on their pedestal and decide whether or not, out of convenience, they wanna go to a, uh, excuse me, sorry, not convenience, but wanna go to, you know, the meeting remotely, I think that I, I will, I will never, uh, even if we have the technology for us, I will never be in favor of it unless the public also, we have the technology for them. I don't think that's fair. You know, I don't think it's fair that I, it can be convenient for me, but not my neighbor who also has three young kids. So, um, I think that unless we do it for the public, it's selfish.
Thank you, Mr. Studo. We, we, we don't have public comment, however, I recognize we're joined by the, we already had public comment, no, we're joined by the Chair of our School Committee, Mr. Buckley, who's got his hand raised, so please, give us your thoughts.
Hi, hi, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, can you, wait. Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah, sorry, sorry, um, so I, I just, on the specific topic, I don't know if it's, if it's ripe to be voted on yet. So I hear you on all the technology issues, I just have a more broader comment, and so I, I would love to see us break down barriers and allow the public to be able to attend meetings. Um, I know from the school committee perspective, it's been nice that a lot of, you know, a lot of people that come to our meeting are parents that have young children that are able to come and attend that way. And I would also say that on my committee, there's at least a couple of us that travel sometimes, and I think it's important to hear from everybody on, on issues, and so like, if I have a member of my committee that is traveling and that is out of town, it would be nice to be able to have them participate if it's, if it's available. And so, I'm not saying that it's something that can be voted on today, but personally, I would like to see this allowed in the future. As an option, there might be limits on that, maybe even if, only if it's out of town, not sitting at home. But we have had members of our committee that have not been able to attend because they've been out of town for work, and it would have been nice to have their perspective on things in the past. So personally, I would love to see this, you know, available in the future, and I would love to see it expanded for the members of the public as well. Just like tonight, I'm gonna have to leave you guys soon cuz I have another work meeting, but it was nice to be able to participate and, you know, share my views if you guys were in person and, you know, I could have watched it, Norcam, and, and yelling at the screen as loud as I wanted, but none, nobody would have heard me, and so I, I would love it to be able to be available in the future, it might not be ripe now, but I think we should all work towards that.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Uh, Ms., um, Clerk Stats.
Yes, um, one thing just to keep in mind too, that, you know, unlike the virtual meeting setting, if, if you had, um, technical difficulties and you could not be seen, uh, or heard, it could affect the meeting, the meeting might have to be postponed, you know, especially a public hearing, it would have to be postponed. Under remote participation, if there are technical difficulties, this meeting can still go on because a quorum of the public body is physically in a room. Now that being said, you may be giving a false sense of security or participation to people at home who think, well, I can still join this meeting and participate in the meeting while I'm at home. But if there are technical difficulties for them in viewing or hearing the board on a matter that they have particular interest, they have stayed home, assuming that they will be able to hear what's going on and may be able to voice their opinions during the, the discussion, and should they be disconnected, now they don't even know what's going on. They're, they're, you know, and they're not in the meeting room, they're not, they're in, they're pajamas at home because that's where they were watching this. So there are a lot of considerations to be taken, you know, I don't want anyone to have that false sense of security that the meeting is going to end if the communication does, because the meeting is the three or the quorum that is physically in the room. Whether or not it is a board member who is participating remotely or a member of the public who has joined the meeting to hear what's going on and, and, you know, make their comments known to the board before a vote that matters to them. So that's another consideration to just, just know, you know, it, it is important to know everything. You know, and, and certainly, once the meetings open up on June fifteenth, the public would have to have the right to come to the physical meeting room. So if they know they have to go to the room to hear what's going on, they know that that's the way it is. But, you know, I just want you to be sure that you realize, you know, the pitfalls, the potential pitfalls with this too, you know, like Mr. Studo has said, you know, maybe we need to know more and set up some parameters and make sure that the public is aware that if they're just being a passive, uh, observant of the proceedings of the board or any public body, that's fine to stay home, just as they did with virtual meetings, but if they have a vested interest, they really should be at the physical meeting room of that public body.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I, I think also, we need to, it's, obviously being taken up by the legislature, so there may be some modification, I was quite surprised to see it on the agenda, but there may be some modifications to the law as it currently exists, because we've had a whole over a year now of meeting like this, so that there may be some, you know, types, some monumental changes to open meeting law based on us meeting on this platform, so. That, I was surprised to see it because there's so much that goes into it besides just voting to allow it. But, um, but I was hoping that with it on the agenda, we would have a plan to comply with the law as it currently exists. Um, and I, I do remember it coming up previously, and I don't know how many years ago that was, but I don't think we could afford to change it back then either, so we would need a financial, we need to consider the financial implications too. Um, unless it's something is ba- that the legislature is gonna change it to something as basic as Zoom, allowing it some hybrid of this or WebEx or the other programs that are out there. Mr. O'Leary. Oh, I mean, um, Mr., Mr., I'm looking at Mr. Gilberto, but, oh, Mr. O'Leary, if there's anything else you have to comment.
No, I, I
We'll go to you, Mr. Gilberto.
Okay, I, I'm strongly in favor of, uh, of accommodating whatever's gonna be here. Uh, I think it's, it's time to move forward, and I think this year has given us an opportunity to, to see how it can work. And again, I recognize all of the pitfalls and all the, uh, challenges that go along with it, but we need to come on, come along with the times and and be prepared to move forward and allow for, um, this type of a platform and public participation. Uh, so, so I don't disagree, it might be a little bit premature to vote on it this evening, but I think we should be giving the administration some direction to look into, you know, how could it be implemented? And again, what the costs are gonna be, and again, we have, um, you know, money that's being sent to us, you know, through the state, from the federal government. To me, should be spent on things such as this, which are one-time expenditures, and this would be a major investment, um, for the future, and I think it's something we should consider strongly. So again, I, I agree with, uh, with most everybody here that it's, there, there's some challenges, but I still think it's necessary and something we should be looking forward to in the, in short order, not, not in the distance, so, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gilberto?
I just wanted to say thank you for the feedback. We certainly will take this information and, and consider the comments, and we'll monitor things with the legislature over the next few weeks, and, um, we'll see where it takes us for a future discussion.
Okay. So, I think probably we're all in agreement that we're, we're, we won't, we will not take a vote on this this evening, we'll wait to hear a course of action, a plan, updates, as well as a, a cost associated with this, how, how it can happen, is that? Is that, why don't we just, Ms. Gonzalez, are you in agreement with that?
Yeah, I think it's a pretty mature.
Mr. Studo, you in agreement?
I, I just want one clarification, Crutch, cuz I read it, but when, when, uh, when Clerk Stat says it, that's when I believe it, not what I read. Um, we, no matter how we vote in the future, let's say like, and, you know, let's say we get the technology and we can do it though, for the purposes you said, three people are still gonna have to be in that room, based on how it reads now, meaning there's no, that, you know, to Mr. Buckley's point, I, I like, he's a five-member board, but if three are traveling, they can't have the meeting.
That is correct.
Okay.
We can't have it now anyway if it's not with the quorum, but it's us and them, but it's not the bigger boards, the bigger boards need, a quorum is one more than half.
Right, and, and that quorum has to be in the room and a person who, if, if it is the Chair of the, the public body who is traveling, another person has to be designated Chair and in the re- meeting room, in the physical room. And as you're talking about the technology aspect too, I mean, you have to keep in mind that you're going to have to address the various meeting rooms that are used throughout the town to accommodate this, you know, I mean, it's not going to be just Room fourteen, so it is, it is a lot to consider.
Thank you, Mrs. Studo, so you're, I think you said it, but you, I was trying to pull the, my colleagues to, to wait till we have more information from you, okay. Mr. O'Leary, you said that, is that, you're nodding yes, and Mr. Walner?
Yes, I agree.
Yes, okay, all right. So let's move on to the next order of business, thank you, Madam Clerk. We're gonna move on to review and discuss the June Town Meeting Warrant Articles, vote recommendations, and then we'll talk about the warrant article assignments, so. Mr. Gilberto, I think we, we all received a copy of the, um, the meeting warrant, hopefully in the mail, I got mine, and, um, hopefully everyone else got theirs. And I think we have, up to this date, I don't know if there are any that you specifically want, want, um, us to take another look at right now, Mr. Gilberto?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, so, beginning on page five of the meeting packet, there are a series of motions. They start under number seven, vote warrant article recommendation, these are articles for which we do not anticipate any action, uh, being taken at town meeting, or for which, um, we know, um, that there is, you know, it's mostly articles we know that we're gonna be planning to pass over, so. The board is so
Why don't we, why don't we go one by one, Mr. Gilberto, so art- article one is, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget amendment, we, we voted previously to recommend a town meeting.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Through you, so, there's only a handful, and, uh, if, um, Vincenzo wants to read the, the motions, then I'll maybe just focus it to the ones that are in that status, rather than have to go through every article.
Sure. That'd be great, Mr. Studo.
Sure, Mike, just go literally through the motions on, on my packet, okay, so, um, Article six, FY twenty twenty-one, Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust. Do you want me to read the motion, the whole thing?
Through you, Madam Chair, that'd be my recommendation, yeah, and I've highlighted in bold the
Yeah, Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article six, FY twenty twenty-one, Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, and, um, further discussion on that recommendation. And, Mr. Gilberto, I believe we heard from the Finance Director that we typically fund this in October Town Meeting.
Uh, we typically, um, fund it as part of the June, um, budget approval, so we have an article in June each year for that upcoming, um, fiscal year, uh, sorry, I strike that, we, we do it in June. This would be for the current fiscal year, we already did this current fiscal year's last June, so.
Okay.
It'll be a further one you're referring to that I'll speak to, that we do in October.
Okay, all right, I'm mixing the two up then. And, and does anyone have any questions on?
There, there, Madam Chair, there is a similar article, I think it's Article eighteen, that will be for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, which we are, we've already recommended.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? No questions, hearing none, motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? I mean, you probably is aye, so we all, Article six, a new recommendation is to pass over. Mr. Studo?
Article eight, FY twenty twenty-one, Appropriate Funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund. Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article eight, Appropriate Funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, questions? Mr. Gilberto on the recommendation?
Madam Chair, thank you, so we traditionally make this transfer in October, um, after the conclusion of the fiscal year from free cash, and we did so last October.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing, seeing none, Mr.'s, on Mr. Studo's motion, second by Mr. O'Leary, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
I mean, you probably is aye, so now Article eight, we're passing over.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Studo, I'm gonna ask that we hold off on Article twenty, on that motion, if we could move to Article twenty-two.
Okay. Uh, Article twenty-two, FY twenty twenty-two, Appropriate Funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund. Madam Chair, I move to recommend passing over Article twenty-two, Appropriate, eight funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, and Mr. Gilberto on the rec- new recommendation.
Madam Chair, through you, uh, this, uh, this would be an appropriation of funding for the PFA for this year twenty twenty-two, which we will do at the October Town Meeting from available free cash, certified as of thirty twenty twenty-one.
All right.
You just gotta fix the typo though, Mike, cuz it says, I corrected it while I was reading it, but it says twenty-one.
Yeah, is it Article twenty-two or twenty-one, which one is it?
Twenty-two.
In the warrant, it's twenty-two?
I'm looking at the warrant, it, it's twenty-two in the actual warrant, I think it's just a typo on this, this roll there.
Yep.
So, do you wanna?
I corrected it as I was
Corrected it in the motion.
Say Article twenty-two, and that's what it said, so. Okay, so the motion is to pass over Article twenty-two, Appropriate Money to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund, and motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further question, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
I mean, you probably is aye, so Article twenty-two will be passed, recommend pass over.
Madam Chair, through you, I'm going to recommend that we hold off on Article twenty-eight, uh, while we continue our review of those revolving accounts. The remaining articles, the board may wish the benefit of some of the presentation in the warrant article hearing prior to taking action, so, um, through you, Madam Chair, we may wish to just come back to those at a later point, during the hearing.
Sure, that would be great, and then if I could just go over, um, that our wa- warrant article assignments, and if there's any, any one warrant, warrant article or two or three or four or five or six or seven that you feel strongly to my colleagues that you would like to present, you know, as you know, we all have the opportunity to go and speak, speak to participants at the town meeting anyway, but if there's anything you feel very, very strongly about, please raise your hand, but here's how I broke it down, articles, I'll do articles one through seven, and I'll, and Mr. O'Leary, articles eight through fourteen. Mr. Walner, articles fifteen through twenty. Mrs. Gonzalez, articles twenty-one through twenty-seven. And Mr. Studo, articles twenty-eight through thirty-two.
Right, I get the fun ones.
No, look, did you see twenty-one? And, again, we, we all have the opportunity, and we all have, and we, we all actually did the past couple of meetings stand up on some of these articles, if we feel very strongly, so I just wanna give my colleagues a couple minutes to just quickly look through those, and I'm happy to shift them around and if, if need be.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, I was going through my warrant, I only got Mrs. Gonzalez and Mr. Studo's recommendations, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, boy, okay, I have, um, I was planning to do the first seven, articles one through seven.
Great.
Mr. O'Leary, the next seven, articles eight through fourteen. Mr. Walner, the next six, articles fifteen through twenty.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez, the next seven, articles twenty-one through twenty-seven. Mr. Studo, because he's new at this, articles twenty-eight through thirty-two.
And, um,
Remaining five.
So, and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, at the town, uh, cuz I think we did it last year, there's like a summary that we read, correct, to present, or is it verbatim, or is this there's like a summary that we read, correct, to present, or is it verbatim, or is this read like verbatim?
No, the warrant articles are mailed to the town meet, you know, to the residents, and the residents appearing, what is prepared in advance is the particular article name, and we present to the town what I recommend and to the moderator what our recommendation is. And then there's debate or deliberation on.
Okay, no, no, that understood. Oh, no, I just didn't know, like, for example, for Article thirty, if every single lot, word is read, like, you know, it's like three and a half pages. I wasn't sure if that's the case. If it is, it is, but.
No, generally, it's just presented in the warrant.
Okay.
Give you a little break this time.
I believe for Article thirty, and probably for a good, I believe for so some of these are being presented by, some of these are being presented by other, other boards, and I believe we'll have a, we'll more than likely have a presentation at that moment in time for that. The zoning articles is typically how it's done. And more than likely have a presentation for Article thirty-one. I don't know who's requested that of the moderator, but I'm assuming that some of yours are gonna, they'll, yours, one of yours is a citizen's petition, so the petitioner would be seeking leave of the moderator to do a presentation, and so that, you know, presents an opportunity in that, in that regard as well, so.
And again, zoning bylaws would be the planning commission would be making the motion, generally.
All right. And does that work for everybody? That's all set, Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you.
Okay, that's perfect. All right, now we have a, we actually, oh, Mrs. Hurlbert's raising her hand. Please, Mrs. Hurlbert, you're muted.
Through you to Barbara Stats. Are there additional warrants available in the lobby of Town Hall? And I ask this because, among other things, I don't have a warrant in the mail.
Maybe it just, maybe it, maybe my mind got to me earlier than yours. But, Miss Clerk Stats, do you have extra warrant articles?
Yes, we do. There are some in Town Hall, so.
Great, thanks.
I did get mine in the mail, you know, timely, but, you know, that just depends on the postal service and the carriers sometimes.
Well, and, you know, we we were having our mail held, and it was not in the held mail. Okay, thank you.
It might be because it was bulk mailing, I don't know. But yeah, we have them, Abby. If you want to, you know, come down when we're open or give me a call if it's a time when we're not open.
Yeah, no, we're leaving, we're going back up to Maine tomorrow, so I would like to take.
It's also online. I know the town administrator has it up on his website. It's on, there's a link to it right on my homepage.
Right. I like to make notes in it.
Thanks. All right, thank you. And our next order of business is a joint meeting with the Community Planning Commission for joint appointments to the Economic Development
Yeah.
Committee. And Mr. Gilberto, could you just tell us for purposes of opening that meeting, the members of the Community Planning Commission that are joining us? I do see our Chair, Mr. Pierce, is with us.
Mr. Hayden, the Vice Chair, is also.
Our Vice Chair, Mr. Hayden, yes.
And I see the Town Planner, I I'm not quickly seeing other folks on here. Danielle, if you could just help me if I'm just.
Why don't I just turn it over to Mr. Pierce? And Mr. Pierce, who's, who of your membership is joining? If you could just state that for the record?
Thank you. So far, it's just myself and Chris, so far as I see, and of course, Danielle.
Mr. Johnston is here as well.
Yes, I'm here as well, Jeremiah Johnston.
Okay.
There you are, okay.
Excellent.
Okay, so yeah, so there's myself, Mr. Hayden, Mr. Johnson, and Danielle.
Okay. Are we, so we're good to proceed?
I just have a quick question. I say, I don't see Mr. Clancy Main's name in the motion, but I see his citizens' activity form.
I can speak to that. Mr. O'Leary, I I spoke to Clancy. He actually ended up moving to Derry, New Hampshire instead of North Reading, so he withdrew from consideration.
Okay.
Okay, so if we can call, I guess we're joint, joint meeting is called to order with the members present, which we do have a quorum of the CPC. So on the motion, Mr. Studo?
Sure. So I'd like to add as well that these these recommendations have done, we're both in agreement with Mr. Hayden from the CPC. It will be for three full members and one associate member. I did not have a chance to speak to Ms. Nancy Ludwig, but me and Mr. Hayden are in agreement on the three full member open openings that we're recommending, plus the one associate member.
So Mr. Studo, let's have the motion, and we're we'll discuss the motion if it gets a second. So let's hear the motion first, and then if we get a second, then we can proceed with and let Mr. Pierce speak as well on the motion.
Madam Chair, I move to jointly appoint the following individuals as members of the Economic Development Committee for the terms stated below. These are the full members, Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, and Maria Ferchero. Or Ferchero, if I'm pronouncing it, you know. In my native Italian, I just, you know, I gave both versions.
Okay, Mr. John.
On the planning board, we agree with those with those appointments.
On Mr. Studo's motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Studo's motion, seconded by Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Studo, we have heard from you as our liaison that these are all recommendations, and Mr. Pierce has just confirmed that. And is there any other que? Are there any other? Are there any other questions before I got the word question out? I saw your hand raised. All right, so Mr. Gilberto, well, we'll we'll go with Mr. Gilberto.
Just to clarify, these would be terms all to expire May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Studo, is that correct?
Yes, thank you. I didn't read that.
All right. Mr. Wallner had his hand raised. Do you have a question, a question, comment?
Just a question. Lisa Egan, I see her as residents in Reading, not North Reading. Is that, is that still okay?
Yes, it is not a residency requirement is not for the EDC to be full member.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Are we placing the other people's names and nomination also as we normally would?
I have another motion for that, the next one, Mr. O'Leary, for the associate.
Generally, I think the practice or policy calls for all of them to be nominated.
Oh, I understand. Okay.
Yeah.
My apologies. You want me to amend my motion, Chair?
Well, the motion that you made was seconded, so it would have to be withdrawn. It it has to be withdrawn if, or voted on, so. Did you want to withdraw your motion?
Please.
And withdraw the second to the motion so that we can, okay. Um, Mr. Hayden, I think, wants to give us some information as well. So, Mr. Hayden?
Yes, Caitlin Sullivan, at this time, is, does not have enough personal time to be a full member. She doesn't think she does. So she really wanted to be involved, and she wanted to get involved as an associate member. So if she had to miss a meeting, or she was late to a meeting, it wouldn't affect a vote or any other information, but she would be able to still join, and hopefully later on, when her time permits, she would be happy to be elevated to a a full member.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hayden.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gilberto.
I think I may be a source of some of the confusion. Mr. Studo, it reads.
All right.
Jointly appoint.
We'll let you fall on the sword for this one, because I'm totally confused at this point.
It should read, I move to nominate the following individuals, not I move to jointly appoint. And then when you call the role, Madam Chair, members will all call three names for the three terms.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Studo, it should be, Mr. Chair, I move to nominate the following individuals.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
Let's try this again. Madam Chair, I move to nominate the following individuals as members of the Economic Development Committee for the terms stated below. Three openings, all expiring May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, Maria Ferchero, Caitlin Sullivan, Nancy Ludwig.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. Wallner. Are there any other nominations? So hearing none, we will close the nominations for this, I think, and then we'll hear for the recommendation once more. Mr. Pierce. Recommendation for the three, the three members.
There'd be Matt Dumont, Maria, and Lisa, those, those three.
Matt Dumont, Lisa Egan?
Yes.
And?
And Maria Ferchero.
Her share.
I was gonna let Vincenzo do say that for me.
Okay. All right. So the liaison has already concurred with that. Okay. So now we'll call the role, I'll call the role of the Select Board. Mr. O'Leary?
Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, Maria Ferchero.
Mr. Wallner?
Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, Maria Ferchero.
Mr. Studo?
Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, Maria Ferchero.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, Maria Ferchero.
And Manu Pelias, Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, and Maria Ferchero, and Mr. Pierce?
Yes, I'll call the role for, and I will start with Jeremiah Johnson.
Yeah, Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, Maria Ferchero.
And Chris Hayden?
Matthew Dumont, Lisa Egan, Maria Ferchero.
And I also say Matt Dumont, Lisa Egan, and Maria Ferchero.
Okay, so they are welcome to board. Now we have another motion, Mr. Studo, for associate members.
I do. I just have one question for the Town Administrator. Do I omit the three names of the full voting members that just got voted in, or do I read it as as it is?
We just appointed them, so they can't serve as associates. They're already appointed as a member.
Yeah. And Mr..
So it leaves us with slim choices here.
Oh, well.
But we can't, we can't go back and then say, now, we've got to now appoint them as an associate. They're already appointed.
Oh, I figured that, but I'm making, making no assumptions tonight with the way these are worded, so I just never reread it again.
So how many do we have left, and how many associate positions are available?
There's unlimited positions. There's two, but there's, I won't put the recommended, the cart before the horse. I give my recommendation after I read the motion. Madam Chair, I move to nominate the following individuals as associate members of the Economic Development Committee for the terms stated below. Caitlin Sullivan, Nancy Ludwig, through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion, Mr. Pierce, your recommendation?
Our recommendation, our recommendations would be the same. I think we, I think we were going to recommend both of them, if I correct. I would like to defer to Chris on that. Chris Hayden, did we agree on?
Sure.
We. Neither Mr. Studo or myself was able to interview the second person. I just lost her name. Nancy, yes. So let me sure her, her her write-up was was impressive, but, you know, do we want to nominate or appoint on that? It's up to the boards.
Madam Chair, to some of us, Nancy Ludwig is a longtime member of the community, but active in the community for a number of years. It would be an asset to any board, committee, or commission that she wishes to serve on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo, your recommendation as a liaison?
My recommendation is Caitlin Sullivan, and the reason not yet for Nancy Ludwig, I want to make sure that she put it in a while ago, and just like Mr. Clancy Mann, I just want to make sure that she's still in it. And my understanding was that whoever did speak to her at some point, she did have some questions, and, you know, I'll I'll, I'm sure I'll, I'll try her again. I just, I I did call last Wednesday, so I just want to, I just want to make sure that we're not appointing some, it's been so long, I want to make sure they still want to do it, and they don't find out tomorrow that, hey, by the way, you're on the Economic Development Committee. So, so for right now, I would just recommend Caitlin Sullivan, just because neither I or Mr. Hayden were able to speak to her.
Well, we have the recommendation, so we'll take a, let's take a vote.
Madam Chair, can I?
Pierce, I'm sorry.
I have a question for for Mr. Gilberto. If we were to forward the nominations of both of these people, and one of them wanted to opt out, what is the, is there a process for them opting out? In other words, if if we find out that Nancy Ludwig did want to be, for some reason, just didn't get back, and does want to be on it, and we appoint her as an associate, can an associate basically just opt out?
She would probably say, no, thank you, and not sign the paper. And we would know that we'd have another person.
Here's the opportunity to give everybody a fair chance at this, and I think it probably would be a good idea, as Steve said, so.
Because she signed the paper that that's what she's interested in.
Exactly.
Doing, so.
Yes.
So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, all right. So let's.
Madam Chair. Clerk Stats. If you do appoint her, she really would need to forward a letter of resignation.
As an associate member?
Yes, it's still an appointment.
Okay.
But if she doesn't get sworn in, what happens?
It's an appointment that you, you, this board made, this public body.
Yeah, okay. You can make a decision then. It's okay.
Yeah, well, that was part of my question, if I may, Madam Chair, is to find out exactly, you know, if we were putting a some kind of, if we were putting pressure on it to do something, or if we should, or if we just give her an opportunity, but it sounds like.
Of course.
According to the town clerk here, it sounds to me like we might be, might be putting her in a position she may not want to be in.
Okay, so you want to, you want us, at least on the nomination for associate, you want us to have, give you the opportunity to at least connect with her?
Yeah, so I think we'll go with Mr. Studo's recommendation of Caitlin Sullivan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pierce. Okay, so on Mr. Studo's motion, seconded by Mr. O'Leary, I'm going to call the role of the.
Question, so are we intending on? If she's interested, are we going to have to have, we're going to have to have another joint meeting in order to?
Well, that would be, that would be true, Mr. Mr. O'Leary, but it might be more proper than putting her in the position without her being, without her actually responding to say yes. I'd rather come back and I'd be willing to come back and revisit the board if that, if she's still interested.
Just as long as the planning commission's aware that we just need another joint meeting to to facilitate it. Again, I don't want it to drag on either if she's interested.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We good? All set, Mr. O'Leary?
All set.
All right, I'm going to call the role of the, of the select one. Mr. O'Leary?
Caitlin Sullivan.
Caitlin Sullivan, Mr. Wallner?
Caitlin Sullivan.
Mr. Studo?
Caitlin Sullivan.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Caitlin Sullivan.
Manu Pelias, Caitlin Sullivan. Mr. Pierce?
Yes, Jeremiah Johnson.
Caitlin Sullivan.
Yeah, Chris Hayden.
Caitlin Sullivan.
And myself is Caitlin Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. So just let us know when you've reached out to Nancy.
Sure.
Yeah.
And she's still in, we'll bring her in.
Yep.
Great.
And what I'll do is I will, I'll try her, I'll try her again tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Studo. Okay, thank you. Our next order of business is an eight PM, June fifth, twenty twenty-one Town Meeting Warrant Article Informational Hearing. So we have I believe several members of the public joining us. And so we're gonna, Mr. Mr. Gilberto, is there a meeting notice that should be read for the record?
On page twenty-seven of the packet, yes.
Thank you. All right. Okay, this is the Town of Noah threading notice of virtual informational hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of the Town of North Reading that a virtual hearing on the following articles contained in the June 5, 2021 Town Meeting Warrant article will be held Monday, May 24, 2021, 8:00 PM. With the hearing accessed via the Internet Zoom link, via telephone with the telephone numbers provided. The hearing, this hearing will represent an opportunity for residents to learn more about the articles on the Town Meeting Warrant, to ask questions, and to engage in discussion in advance of the June Town Meeting. A listing of warrant articles is as follows. Article 1, Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendment. Article 2, Fund Fiscal Year 2021 Snow and Ice Deficit. Article 3, Fiscal Year 2021 Appropriate Funds to Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Article 4, Fiscal Year 2021 Transfer Funds to Water Stabilization Fund. Article 5, Fiscal Year 2021 Appropriate Money to Stabilization Fund. This Article 6, Fiscal Year 2021 Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Article 7, Fiscal Year 2021 Transfer Funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. Article 8, Fiscal Year 2021 Appropriate Funds to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund. Article 9, Select Town Officers. Article 10, Hear and Act on Reports of Town Officers and Committees. Article 11, Authorize Director of Public Works to Accept Easements. Article 12, Authorize Treasurer to Enter into Compensating Balance Agreements. Article 13, Authorize Chapter 90 Highway Construction Funds. Article 14, Prior Year Bills. Article 15, Home Rule Petition, Establish Cell Tower Receipts Reserve Fund. Article 16, Fiscal Year 2021 Operating Budget. Article 17, Fund Retirement Obligations. Article 18, Appropriate Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Article 19, Transfer Funds to School District Reserve Fund for Unanticipated, Unbudgeted Costs for Special Education, Out-of-District Tuition, or Transportation. Article 20, Rescind Authorization to Borrow. Article 21, Fiscal Year 2022 Capital Expenditures. Article 22, Appropriate Money to Participating Funding Arrangement Fund. Article 23, Fund Town Building Repairs. Article 24, Appropriate Money for Special Council Legal Expenses. Article 25, Appropriate Money for Legal Expenses, 20 Elm Street Litigation. Article 26, Amend Code of North Reading, Chapter 66, Finance, Add School Rental Revolving Fund. Article 27, Establish Dollar Amount for School Rental Result Revolving Fund. Article 28, Amend Dollar Amounts for Various Revolving Funds. Article 29, Amend Code Zoning Bylaws, Add Section, Small Cell Wireless Facilities. Article 30, Amend Code Zoning Amendment, Addition of Senior Housing Overlay Zoning District and Related Amendments. Article 31, Citizens Petition, Amend Zoning Bylaw, MAP 18, Parcels 13, 14, and 15. Article 32, Amend Code Zoning Bylaws, Section 230, zoning map 4, 12, and 14 Concord Street. This hearing is held pursuant to Sections 18 through 25 of Chapter 38 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Open Meeting Law. Any interested citizen is welcome to virtually attend and participate in this hearing. Notice of explanation. It is the unanimous desire of the North Reading Select Board to encourage and allow the highest level of public participation in making decisions that affect North Reading. This Warrant Article hearing is intended to represent an opportunity for extended virtual discussion in advance of Town Meeting. We sincerely hope that you will join us for this hearing on June 5, 2021, at 8:00 PM, signed by the members of the Select Board. So we will turn to Mr. Gilberto, what I think would be a good idea, as we proceeded previously to just review. Even if we, we voted to pass all of these specific, specific articles, if we could just do a quick summary of each, and that way we can invite if anyone has any questions on those.
Here.
Go ahead, Mr. Gilberto.
Through you, as you know, we make available in the printed warrant, the opportunity to submit questions via email in advance. And we did receive a, a series of questions from a leave of residence yesterday or early today that the finance director has gone through and, and answered. The questions would appear to largely come from the financial reports that are at the beginning of the warrant. So we, I, I thought I saw the individual here at the hearing, but I don't, I don't see his name here now. So I don't know whether you want us to go through the responses now, or maybe wait till later. There were a number of questions, probably 10 or so questions. And the finance director does have responses for nearly all of them.
And you're saying they're related to the first articles, Article 1, or?
No, they're related to the financial reports that, that precede the warrant itself.
Okay, so perhaps if we, if we go through each article, we can just ask if there's any question and move it, move along if there aren't, even if there, if we voted to pass over, I think that might be the best way to handle it, and then when we arrive at those particular warrant articles that you, you received, you can raise your hand, and then we can let that, let the answer, I think we should address the questions and answer the questions, however the finance director answered them.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so the finance director, through you, Madam Chair, do you think you could sort of weigh in with the responses as we go article by article?
To Ms. Ms. Rourke.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the town administrator. Yes, I can do that. Some mic are addressed as well through our presentation.
Okay. Great. All right, and Madam Chair, I'm going to share my screen. I do a PowerPoint presentation to guide us through this.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you, is the presentation showing up as a whole screen, or is it in that funny presenter view?
It, it's, it's, you can see the whole screen.
Okay, everyone see that, okay?
Yes.
I just, we'll note for the record, the town meeting is Saturday, June 5, at 9 o'clock AM, 189 Park Street, scheduled to take place on Arthur Kenny Turf Field. The next slide, a summary of our available balances for accounts that are frequently part of our financial planning process for a town meeting. I'm not going to read the dollar amounts, but you do see them up there on the screen. Moving right into Article 1, our Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendment. We do anticipate that a vote will, to increase the water enterprise budget to reflect increased purchase of water from the town of Andover will be a recommended adjustment, and the funding source would be water department revenue associated with the additional sale of, of water. So that's the one budget amendment item that we are aware of at this point in time. It was identified after the meeting on May 11.
Do we, do we, all right. I was going to ask if you could just, I, I can still see, but if, if any participant has any question, if you could raise your hand or put something in the chat room. But I'm seeing none, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try to expand my, my screen so I can also see.
Thank you.
For you. Okay. Moving right along to Article 2, Snow and Ice Deficit Would appropriate funding for expenses that exceeded the Fiscal Year 21 budget for snow and ice removal. It's estimated to be $47,155 appropriation funded with free cash.
So questions, what's required to Article 2?
I see none.
Seeing none. And we, we select, was recommended that. Okay.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 3, Transfer of Funds to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. The balance is currently $820,000. $820,853. The article proposes to add $1,341,000 in free cash to the fund, which will then subsequently be appropriated into the omnibus operating budget later on in the warrant.
Any questions? That's recommended by the Select Board. I see none, and I see nothing in the chat room, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 4, Transfer of Funds to the Water Stabilization Fund. We anticipate recommending a transfer of $14,665, which are the water department enterprise retained earnings, which would be transferred into the fund.
Questions on Article 4? None, seeing none, no chat, no questions, and that's recommended by the Select Board.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 5, Transferring Funds to the Stabilization Fund. Current balance is $3,630,453. We're anticipating to recommend the balance of free cash after factoring other uses at Town Meeting into this fund for increasing the amount available, and we'll have a finalized number for that the morning of Town Meeting. And through the finance director, I believe the estimated amount for that transfer is somewhere around $500,000. Again, that's an estimated amount that'll be finalized the morning of Town Meeting.
Which is why our recommendation is going to be at the Town Meeting. Questions on Article 5? I see none, nothing in the chat room.
Madam Chair, through you, Article 6, Transferring Funds to the Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability Trust Fund. The balance is $2,605,708. We're recommending passing over the bar, the, the, this article, the appropriation of funding into the fund is proposed as part of the FY '22 budget plan under Article 18.
Any questions? Seeing none. We're passing that over, obviously. Okay.
Article 7, Transferring Funds to the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. Current balance is $202,239. And as is the case annually, we expect to be recommending whatever the available funding projected to be left in that appropriation the morning of Town Meeting to be transferred into the stabilization fund. And I will just note, as we discussed in previous meetings, we are looking at the, the funding mechanism for the solid waste program. We've committed to look at that over the course of fiscal year '22. And if we identify that there are any adjustments that need to be made, we would recommend those adjustments to take place in fiscal year '23. I can tell you that the finance director, the public works director, and I did speak with town council, and you got their feedback, and they did not, you know, feel that there was anything patently incorrect in the way we're, we're establishing the fee, but did agree that reviewing the fee a little bit more closely in advance of an upcoming budget would be a best practice that they would, they would recommend in summary, and we intend to do that as we stated a few meetings ago.
Okay. Questions? I don't see any. And were any of these initial ones, the, the ones that the finance director was specifically responding to? You had mentioned they were in the beginning, Mr. Gilberto.
The, the, the question seemed to be out of the financial summary, so actually, you can't see what I'm holding up because I've got this PowerPoint presentation up. But the earlier pages in the warrant, pages nine and 10, have a revenue forecast, and then they have appropriation projection in them, and it just seemed like the questions were born out of that, which is not a warrant article, it's a report to, to the town.
Okay, all right. So I think at any point, if the, if the warrant article seems to appear relevant to the questions, then just jump in or have, or Ms. Rourke can jump in. All right, so we're moving on to Article 8.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appropriating funding to the participation, participating funding arrangement fund. We're recommending passing over the article. The transfer is traditionally made in October, and for fiscal year 2021 was made in October of 2020. We anticipate recommending that transfer being made in October of this year for fiscal year 2022.
Okay. Any questions? I see none. No chat. Passing over anyway. Article 9?
Madam Chair, through you, Selection of Town Officers. This is a routine article. Which the Select Board is, obtains the authority to select officers for which no, no bylaw, state law designates authority for appointment. It's a routine article.
Article 10?
Madam Chair, through you, this is to hear the reports of officers and committees, also a routine article.
Article 11, Mr. Gilberto.
Similarly routine, authorizing the DPW director to accept easements for water mains, drainage, and other public purposes.
An article 12. I'm just going to watch for hands raised or chat room, Mr. Gilberto, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is, is the main screen going, I, I can't tell what everyone's seeing. Are you seeing?
It's, it's right now on current cash reserve.
Okay, I apologize. So let me just move that through. Are we on 12 or 13, Madam Chair?
Now we're on Article 12.
Great, so this would authorize a treasurer to enter into compensating balancing agreements. It is a routine article allowing the treasurer to enter into agreements where a portion of the interest earnings are retained by the bank in exchange for the services. Again, a routine art.
Okay, Article 13?
Authorizes Chapter 90 Construction, which we anticipate receiving $516,699 from the state, which is our share of $200 million being distributed statewide.
Article 14?
Prior year bills. We do have a few bills that we are projecting to be paid, one for office equipment and maintenance, repairs and maintenance, and the amount of $216.43. One for volunteer recognition and the amount of $210. One for custodial services and the amount of $277.71. One for code enforcement certification and the amount of $287.24, and a legal subscription and the amount of $245.42. Through you, Madam Chair, to the finance director, the, this would be an authorization. The funding would come out of these departments fiscal year 2021 operating budgets, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that, that tends to evolve as we get closer to the meeting. That's why your recommendation has not yet been made, and we'll ask you to make a recommendation on the morning of Town Meeting.
Mr. Gilberto, I would just say to keep moving forward, and if I see a hand raised, I'll, I'll let you know, or if I see anyone make any comment in the chat room, and then perhaps at, at the end of these, you can explain the questions and the answers. I think that would be a good idea.
Sounds good. I'll keep moving. Article 15, A Home Rule Petition to Establish Cell Tower Receipt Reserve Fund. The town has leased space at municipal properties, including water towers and at the DPW garage, with the prior approval of Town Meeting. State Department of Revenue has recommended to be established a receipts reserve fund to set aside this revenue associated with the leases for future expenditure. Town Council has recommended us language for a special act which will be required to establish such a fund, such a fund, and that was included in the warrants. The main motion that we will, we will recommend will clarify that the lease may be based on water towers or any other facility approved by Town Meeting. That's something that we caught. There's a, the authorization is focused on town, on, on the town's water towers, but as some of the board members know, we have a facility that's located at the DPW garage off of Chestnut Street, and we want to be clear that that also would be included. Madam Chair, through you, to Article 16, the Fiscal Year 2022 Operating Budget. For those who have not seen it, there was a pretty extensive presentation made over the past two meetings by the finance director. The budget is voted as two motions, one with available funds and one for debt service with a grand total of $80,055.602, broken down roughly $31 million for general government. Roughly $35 million for education, including a vocational technical school assessment. Just over $6 million in various enterprises and debt service of $7.769 million.
Mr. Gilberto, I would imagine that this subject of the questioning probably pertains to this article.
It does. Most of it, I think, is related to it, Madam Chair.
So I think this might be a good opportunity to do the question asked and the answer provided.
Great. Madam Chair, through you to the finance director.
Yes, please, Ms. Rourke.
Thank you. It does not pertain to every single department, so I will answer the questions that are being asked. Question number one, Select Board, 18% increase. And that is due to breaking out the position of Recording Secretary. Town Administrator, the increase for the town administrator's office is for the restoration and addition of the position for the project manager grant coordinator that was funded. in FY twenty and cut from FY twenty-one, and now being restored for FY twenty-two. The salary pool increase is due to contract settlements that can be union contracts, it can be non-union contracts, it can be employment agreements, and it's also for sick and vacation buybacks. We also have included for FY twenty-two, the U Services Assistant Director position, as well as the Fire Department recruit training overtime costs. Assuming that we will have two retirements within the Fire Department, and those decisions have been were made several weeks ago. Question number four, how many Finance Directors are there in town? There is one Finance Director and one Assistant Finance Director. Question number five, the Collect, Collector's Office, Collection Office, the increase is due to the restoration of a clerical position that was eliminated for FY twenty-one. Question number six, Information Systems. The increase is driven by upgraded GIS software and support costs, as well as other increased annual support costs that go anywhere between three to seven percent annually, and those support costs could be for our financial management systems, to our servers, to backup solutions. There's a whole slew of, uh, support costs. Question number seven, Community Planning. The increase is driven by the restoration of the twenty thousand dollars for EDC expenses. Question number eight, Police Nostalgia Capital for the purchase and outfitting of two hybrid police cruisers. There were no police cruisers, marked police cruisers purchased in FY twenty-one. Question number nine, Code Enforcement, the increase is driven by the restoration of a part-time electrical inspector position that was cut from FY twenty-one's budget due to the vacancy in that position. Question number ten, Department of Public Works Increase is driven mainly by the small capital of a hundred and forty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Which is almost a hundred thousand over the small capital that was included for FY twenty-one. The question number eleven is regarding the sanitation budget, and as we all know, our trash fee has increased, and that's due to hauling and disposal costs contractual increase. Question number twelve, Library Increase is due to the cost of, uh, subscription services. There's been some added increased, uh, cost for online subscription services and things like that. Uh, question number thirteen is Recreation. And I'm assuming the, the question pertains to, as the Town Administrator referenced on page nine or ten, where the expenditures are just listed solely. As a general fund expenditure, the subsidy increased substantially, if you all remember. And that's due to the town increasing the subsidy to Parks and Recreation Enterprise Fund for an additional DPW Parks Position that we're taking on for the year, so that they can regain their revenues that were lost due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, because if you look at the actual enterprise budget for Recreation, it's not a twenty percent increase that is noted in this email. And number fourteen is School Operations, a five percent increase, and that has to do with various employment contracts and other expenditure increases and additional costs due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. That covers, uh, the questions in regarding the omnibus warrant article, but I, as the Town Administrator mentioned, I believe these were driven by that summary page.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rourke. Any other questions of the attendees? I see none, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, Article Seventeen, Funding Retirement Obligations, two hundred thousand dollars from free cash, sixty thousand of which for municipal retirement obligations, and hundred and forty thousand for public school retirement obligations. Article Eighteen, Transfer of Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefit Liability Trust Fund. Propose to transfer any amount of three hundred thousand dollars to be funded from raise and appropriate in accordance with our fiscal year twenty-two financial plan. Article Nineteen, Transferring Funds to School District Reserve Fund for Unanticipated Unbudgeted Costs for Special Education, Out-of-District Tuition or Transportation. This was a fund that was set up a couple of years ago at town meeting, and, and there was an initial transfer that was made. The School Committee is proposing and requesting a transfer into the funding, and we've identified the proposed funding amount of a hundred thousand dollars for transfer from free cash into this fund for fiscal year twenty-two. Article Twenty, Rescinding Authorizations to Borrow. There are none anticipated at this time. We'll continue to look at that between now and the June town meeting date. Now, and we'll ask the Select Board to make a recommendation at that time. Article Twenty-One, The Fiscal Year Twenty-Two Town Capital Budget. The, there's multiple slides that show all of these projects. I'm not going to go through every single one of them. They are in your warrant, which should have arrived at your doorstep, and if you want to look online, it's on the town's website as well. This is a plan that was presented by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee on May tenth and approved by the Select Board that evening. It's been recommended by the Select Board, School Committee, Finance Committee, and Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Article Twenty-Two. Appropriating Money to the, to the PFA, we're recommending passing this over, because we anticipate making that funding transfer in October from the balance of funds available as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. And the board voted earlier this evening to recommend passing over that article. Article Twenty-Three, Funding Town Building Repairs. We have a series of projects that total fifty thousand dollars to be funded from free cash at the Town Hall, the Third Meeting House, and at the Damon Tavern. Madam Chair, through you, Article Twenty-Four, Funding for Special Council Legal Expenses. We do anticipate passing over this article, but we'll be monitoring the status of the case between now and the June town meeting, when we'll ask for the board to vote its recommendation. Similar article, Article Twenty-Five, Appropriating Funding for the Twenty Elm Street Litigation. We are recommending a transfer of a hundred thousand dollars from free cash, and the board has previously voted to recommend the article. Article Twenty-Six, Would amend the Code of the Town of North Reading. Our bylaws to add the School Rental Revolving Fund for Surplus Property. This would establish the fund for rental agreements that were authorized at the June twenty-twenty town meeting. You know, I will say, the School Committee evaluated proposals to lease the surplus space, but ultimately decided not to pursue the lease of space at this time, although they may revisit it in the future. Regardless, this would be an administrative action to codify the previous approval at town meeting in June of twenty-twenty. Similarly, there is an action to set the maximum to be expended from the article in a given year. I have spoken with the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operation, and the recommended dollar amount would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be voted on at this town meeting. Article Twenty-Eight would be to modify, potentially modify, the various amounts of some of the revolving funds that are already, um, codified, and if upon our review, there's any action to be taken, we will recommend it. It's also possible we'll be recommending passing over with that recommendation coming in on the morning of town meeting. Article Twenty-Nine, The Small Cell Wireless Facility Zoning Bylaw. Would establish a zoning bylaw regulating the construction of so-called small cell wireless facilities on public and private property in town. I have a series of slides that just describe what's going on. Most importantly, we have no applications for such infrastructure to be constructed in North Reading at this time, but the Town Planner and the Planning Commission have been in discussions with Reading Municipal Light Department regarding potential utilization of their poles here in, in North Reading. This would also address, though, any potential construction on private property as well. There's no information on whether there's even a desire, but passing a zoning bylaw now would enable a review procedure. Should there be any future requests that come in? There's a reference in this bylaw to a policy that would be passed by the CPC that could be amended from time to time, that would include aesthetic requirements and application procedures, and we expect the Select Board will be asked to approve a similar policy for aesthetic components for anything that's requested to be installed on public property, again, most likely on infrastructure owned by Reading Municipal Light Department. Are there any questions on that article?
No questions.
Article Thirty, so Articles Thirty and Thirty-One, I know the petitioners are here. I recognize the Planning Commission is the petitioner for Article Thirty, which would establish an overlay district for senior housing at one forty-six to one fifty Park Street. We have a couple of different slides that just describe this, again, for a development that would allow for a maximum fifty units. With eight affordable units in perpetuity on the site are about fifteen percent. They would be age restricted, with one occupant required to be fifty-five years or older. Four acres of development on three parcels. Zoning would allow multifamily residential, but not nursing home or hospital, although these are already allowed in the underlying local business zoning district. And it would include mixed-use component if allowed by the Planning Commission. The applicant's office is contemplated to remain a commercial space. So there's a bit of the history that's on here, and I know the planner is here as well to answer any questions. There were several workshops held, the applicant's been before multiple boards, and I know is here this evening as well. There was a hearing that was held in, in April. The proposals are response to a new development concept, and it's been sponsored by the Planning Commission, consistent with the needs expressed in the Housing Production Plan and the Master Plan. Senior housing, including affordable senior housing, and a greater variety of housing types and choices. And we have a couple of different overviews that just show you the the, the, the development of the multiple parcels I play here. Here from one forty-six to one fifty Park Street, and it is a rendering that's also been provided of the contemplated project. And through you, either Madam Chair or Madam Vice Chair, I, I do know that the, the Town Planner is here, as is the Chair of the Planning Commission, and the Attorney and the Developer as well. I know there's been some developments over the past couple of weeks with regard to this. Shall we start with the Town Planner on behalf of the sponsor?
Sure, I'm just trying to see if there are any. Can you hear me, Mr. Gilberto?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you, okay, for a bit, it was a bit muddy there for a bit, so I shut the video off, but if there aren't any questions on this, then maybe perhaps we could go to the proponent for those couple of changes that were, we had discussed at our last meeting, and I believe the team is here again for this meeting. So, we have Attorney Latham here. Why don't we recognize Attorney Latham to go ahead and summarize the, the changes that you, you had wanted to discuss with regard to this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris Latham for Mr. Bruce Wheeler, and the rest of the team is here as well. Based on the, the prior Select Board hearing, and Mr. Walner's suggestion about having local preference relative to market rate units, not just the affordable units, but market rate units as well. We reported back to CPC, and CPC basically approved a local preference for market rate units, and we worked in conjunction with Town Council. Town Council worked up a proposed motion that CPC, as I understand it, is going to be proposing at the, at the meeting. And basically, uh, it basically outlines how there is local preference for market rate units. And if, if you'd like, I can share my screen, and I could show you the, the exact motion if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yep.
So I'll stop my sharing.
All right, I'll try to do my share. Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a little small, but we can see it.
Okay, I can try to, uh, I can try to blow it up a little bit more. It doesn't give me a little, it doesn't really give me a lot of options here. Oh, wait a minute. Zoom. Can you, is that better?
Look.
Yes.
Okay. So, so basically, what is, is it does, is it removes Section K of the proposed bylaw. Now, Section K was dealing with internal things such as the elevators that the Town Council was concerned with as to whether that would be enforceable or not. And he said, that's obviously something that can be discussed in the permitting process. So, what we propose is to put the local preference in Section K. And so what it does is it says as part of the, as a special permitting process, basically, the, a, a, a local preference review of the, of the plan would be proposed to the CPC with input from the Select Board. And that would basically provide that market, new market rate units would be sold to the general public. They'd have to first be given an opportunity for members of the town, current or former members of the town, employees of the town, a parent, child, or sibling of a, of a resident of the town. And the plan would be provided for advanced public notice at the developer's expense for the local preference plan, and, and making public notice to North Reading residents that basically there's an availability of unit of, of market rate units. And so this is what I understand the CPC is going to be moving because the warrant's already been published and everything. They're going to be moving for this motion of amendment to be at town, at town meeting.
So. Yes. Mr. Chair. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you. Through you to Attorney Latham and/or the Town Planner. Would there be a willingness to consider this as part of a, a main motion? So that the main motion to approve the bylaw would include this modification in it, rather than as a separate amendment?
That, however, the, the CPC in town meeting wants to do it is, is fine with us.
So, and I say that generally because if, you know, the consensus is, and I'm, I'm kind of asking the Select Board as well. You know, the consensus is that we all are in agreement on this, says what's being brought to town meeting, you know. Sometimes it's cleaner to just have the main motion to reflect that, rather than to be debating a, an amendment.
Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Pierce.
We would have no objection to that. It would make it, I do agree, it would make it cleaner. We weren't sure, though, if we could actually do that, but I believe it, as long as it falls within the four corners, and, and there's no objection to that, I think we would, uh, we'd like to do that.
Okay, to, to my colleagues. Mr. O'Larry?
Yeah, absolutely, and just including them as part of the main motion. Have a handout for town meeting. It falls within the four corners, and it's one motion, one and done.
Yep.
Mr. Waller?
Yeah, I agree. It should be connected with the main motion, and I really appreciate the extra effort you put in here to make this happen. It's, it's more than what I hoped for, and I'm really glad it happened. So thank you very much for being responsive and bringing this forward. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Strudo, in agreement?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez, in agreement?
Yes, I am.
All right, so. Let me see if there's any other questions. Any other questions? Hands raised? Okay.
You know.
I see none either.
And if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
It's, it's not part of the bylaw, but I just wanted to raise to the Select, Select Board's knowledge that Mr. Wheeler has also expressed the hope that basically he, he's offered or proposed to work with the town CPC Select Board to possibly do some, some landscaping and some improvements relative to the town common that would be perpetually paid for by the Homeowners Association, particularly around the, the grandstand or the, the bandstand. So we have a conceptual plan. I don't know if you want to see that tonight or not. But obviously, it's something that obviously the town's going to be directing, but we thought it'd be something that would be helpful and, and be a very positive thing both for the town and also for the residents of, of the, of the project who are hopefully going to be able to utilize some of this, this public space.
Okay, I'm sure it's, it's, it's not. Okay, I'm sure it's 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 not really related to the warrant article, but while you're here, you might as well, you could show what you have to show. And obviously, that'll be driven by.
Madam Chair, I don't know if you can see this?
Yes.
Okay, so this is is basically a a concept plan and obviously this is something that Mr. Wheeler's proposing. Of course, it would be in conjunction with what the what the town wants to do. Also, an idea of maybe some potential lighting, so it will look well with the rider store across the street that has some lighting, but landscaping, it it's not, we don't believe it's going to screw up with any of the sle- of the sledding of the kids or anything like that. And it and it would, you know, utilize basically giving some ADA access that I think would be helpful and some benches for people to sit in and enjoy the enjoy the comment.
Okay, great. Any questions, comments? All set?
So the CPC has taken formal action now? Yeah, the CPC has taken formal action on the on the article, making a recommendation.
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we we did, we have recommended it, so.
All right.
We haven't looked at this comment enhancement yet. So we would probably during the during the site plan review process, we would look at this and make sure that there was no problems with it.
Okay, so do we have any other questions of my colleagues? Mrs. Gonzalez? No, all set? Mr. Wallner?
All set, thank you.
Mr. O'Leary, all set?
All set.
Mr. Studo?
All set.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney Latham.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, will we be making a recommendation?
I was just.
Meeting.
I was just gonna turn to just ask if there's any other questions of the individuals attending? I only see Attorney Latham's hand up, so. That's all right.
Remove my hands.
Had any more questions for us, any comments or any questions? And I do not see any. And Mr. Gilberto, you can confirm that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is one of the ones that we were holding off on until our informational hearing for a recommendation of the board. So do I hear a motion from my colleagues?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to recommend Article and Code Zoning Amendments Edition of Senior Housing Overlay Zoning District and Related Amendments.
All second.
I have a motion by Mr. Studo in a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Leary.
I would just like to comment once again that you know, Mr. Wheeler, we've had a lot of experience dealing with Mr. Wheeler over the years and developing in town. The experiences have been mutually agreeable and he's been a good listener. And obviously, this is another example where he was listening intently and put together a good team here, and I think the proposal is worthy of support. So I can applaud his efforts and I applaud his willingness to work with the town boards, committees, and provisions and accommodate what we were looking for, so.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Any other comments, questions? I I will just say from the chair, I agree wholeheartedly. I think this is a vastly different experience. And I haven't been around to work with Mr. Wheeler or Mr. Wheeler's team previously, but the information presented has, what's sealed the deal for me, the last meeting that you attended, it was so well presented. And my thought is at the time that this does come up at the town meeting that you you do that if you get leave of by the moderator that you can present that. That was quite helpful to me. And I know that the CPC worked pretty tirelessly with you as well on this. So I appreciate the input the CPC has presented. And both Attorney Latham's were quite helpful in terms of us understanding this and seeing how it fits in our community and and good on Mr. Wallner for recommending that residence preference too. So I think that that's that's just an excellent, that was an excellent recommendation. And I was so pleased to see how quickly you came back with that, Mr. Wheeler. So we really appreciate that as well. Anything else before we take a vote? So it was a motion by Mr. Studo, seconded by Mr. O'Leary? Do we have, do we do have a motion? Okay. All right, seeing no further comment. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? And Manu Pelisai, it's unanimously recommended by the board. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Latham. Our next article, Mr. Gilberto.
Madam Chair, through you, Article thirty-one, a citizen's petition to amend the zoning bylaws for map eight, parcels thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, which are properties located at four, twelve, and fourteen Concord Street, formerly known as Seven Acres Poultry Farm. Through you, Madam Chair, I do see that Attorney Jill Mann is here, I believe, on behalf of the now owner of the property, Mr. Sergio Coviallo.
Who's also here. He's also in attendance.
Coviallo is well welcome.
Sure, Attorney Mann, welcome.
Thank you very much.
So why don't you take us through this? I think the biggest question I believe we had received was what's the plan? What's the plan for this? Which, if you could just give us a summary of what this citizen's petition for rezoning is and tell us the plan.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coviallo has purchased twelve and fourteen Concord Street and is in the process of purchasing purchasing for with the intent to allow those two residential structures that remain at the front of the building to stay. His desire is to simply renovate, I shouldn't say renovate, to redevelop the property, the rear portion of the property in order to use it for his business. He's outgrown the business that he has presently, the location that he has, so he's simply wanting to keep his business within North Reading, and this site will allow him to do that. And what Mr. Coviallo did is he has no desire to upset the neighborhood. He wants to try and keep that residential feel. So as you can see, what he had done was seek an engineer to actually put together the aerial depiction that you see on the screen now. And he in fact sent that to all of the abutters, all of the abutters to the neighborhood as well. And what the intent is, is if you can see the red triangle or rectangle, I should say, right? The red rectangle would be the location of the new building that would support Coviallo electrical. And you can see that it's basically in line with the Bobcat Building. And again, that those two residential structures remain. So I think one of the big contests with people on Concord Street originally was, well, what about the residential character of the neighborhood? And I think as most residents of Concord Street know, it's a very busy street. And there is all types of industrial uses, if you will, to the lower part of Concord Street. And in fact, Mr. Pierce had even stated during one of the most recent planning board hearings that this property, which is now industrial office, is a zoning district that actually has less intense uses than when most of these people had moved into the neighborhood, because back then it was heavily heavily industrial, heavy industrial uses. So this particular type of use almost represents a great interim zoning district because it's going to allow the residential uses to stay. He's going to be able to put up business use. Because should he not be able to develop it like this, it's a fifteen acre parcel of land that's in the residential zoning district. I think that based on what I'm hearing from many people in the town of North Reading, it would be nice to have a development such as this that would generate tax revenue without any incurrence of additional cost to the town. And given that this is going to be industrial, that's exactly what would happen. And we will, I would point out that a couple of the neighbors who actually weren't in favor of doing this, once they saw Mr. Coviallo's plan actually noted their support and wrote a letter to the CPC in support of rezoning this particular parcel. I would also note too, you can see the paper street that separates this pro- this property. I know there have been some some issues of how far do you allow an industrial zone to creep? But it's pretty, it's pretty easy to actually identify the final point, because there is a street that cuts off this property. It is an unbuilt street, a paper street, but there still is a street that runs all the way down to the bottom of the property. And that's really why we're seeking the rezoning, because we think it's more appropriately used as an industrial property and less appropriate to be used as another residential subdivision off of this busy street. Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Let's see if we have any questions to my colleagues. Any questions? Any questions of the members in attendance? Or?
I see Mr. Wallner's hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm looking at the list. I'm trying to find you. Mr. Waller?
Yeah, way back in the summer when we were, when this was being proposed, there was a offer made by your client that they would section off part of the parcel to be for parks and rec use. And we haven't heard anything about that since that time. So.
Puzzled off for what? I apologize, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, there was a, there was a offer made to create a certain section. If I remember, it's something like five thousand square feet. I can't remember exactly, but there was an offer made that if we, you know, if he got to buy the property, that he would designate some of that property towards parks and rec use. And I haven't heard anything about that since that time.
I, my understanding of that, Mr. Wallner, was that was to, so that we wouldn't proceed with trying to get the authorization from rez- the at town meeting to buy it ourselves.
Oh.
It was, it was to entice us not to move forward with our special meeting, which, as you know, there there wasn't enough interest in the town to, for us to acquire the parcel. It was in that context, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Gilberto?
That's, that is the time that it was proposed to us, yes. I have not heard much or anything about it since that point in time.
I honestly don't know anything about it either.
Would your client care to comment? Who's on?
I doubt that it's still an effective offer since the town did actually attempt to acquire, so I don't even, I I see that Sergio's muted. I'm not sure. I'm I'm sorry, I I honestly don't know anything about it, and I see that Sergio's muted, so I don't know if he left the room.
Okay. Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, has the, has the CPC taken any action on this, Mr. Pierce? I mean, I know you have. I shouldn't have phrased it that way, but any recommendation is what what, I think we were waiting on your recommendation as well on this one.
Well, I think we just had our last meeting voted to recommend.
Okay, great.
So we, because we thought that the that we could use, that we'd already lost quite a bit of property to quite a bit of commercial property has been lost to to housing and so forth and to residential uses. So we kind of, we we thought this might be a good addition. Again, as as Jill Mann pointed out, there is a fairly nice boundary line to it, an actual demarcation line, if you will, that that makes it a little more difficult for it to move forward any further than this, which was one of the concerns. And kind of puts an end, an end, a end to the to the expansion of that zone.
Okay, I do have a question here from Ms. Doherty. How large will the commercial building be in square feet?
Feet, yeah.
And how large will the parking areas, et cetera, be?
I think all we have right now, unless Jill has an answer for that, I think all we have now is is a a sketch of what we're gonna, of what's proposed. I don't think there's any real number, hard numbers on it yet. We were not presented with any. And again, during site plan review, that will all, that will all come out. But we didn't, there was no discussion about parks and rec use either. So I do believe that that Mr. Gilberto is correct. That was back before we actually didn't buy it, you know.
Okay, any other questions? Let me see. I'm seeing none. Mr. Gilberto, you don't see any, right?
Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Leary.
Just the current proposal calls for leaving two of the parcels as residential, but this, looking to still have that included in the rezoning. Did that come up during the planning commission meeting? And was there any consideration to keep those as residential for a transition for the neighborhood?
We did not discuss that specifically. They indicated that they were leaving that residential because it was that actually worked for them. They didn't really need that residential space out front, and it and it's a good buffer. So perhaps this man can you know, give us more information on that.
But we didn't propose to to leave them out actually, because you would have to, we have to do an A and R plan in order to even carve out those pieces. So because we're going to have to have sufficient frontage to have the lot be an IO district on its own. When we cut it out, the purpose will be to retain enough area so that those two other lots can actually be, continue to be used and not be completely nonconforming. I mean, we didn't discuss it extensively, though. And we could have done that.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Keller, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Leary.
Just as a follow-up, maybe to Danielle, just a further explanation as to what what could have been done or could be done in relation to retaining the residential?
I have not looked at it for that purpose at all. It never came up in the CPC discussions. So I'd have to look at the properties to kind of measure it out, probably similarly to how the applicant would need to do that. Um, so I really can't comment on that, unfortunately. We just, we just didn't look at it.
Mr. Keller, Mr. O'Leary, you all set?
All set for now, thank you.
Mr. Keller?
I'm just wondering if if we know anything about what the anticipated traffic flow, particularly truck traffic flow, will be onto Concord Street?
At this time, we don't know what it would be. Far less than fifteen homes, but I don't know what it would be.
Just a little little concern with that that close to the intersection.
Just as a clarification, does Mr. Coviallo already operate on Concord Street? So there wouldn't be any additional traffic added to Concord Street? It's just a relocation of the of the commercial vehicles?
This is true. So he's not going to be bringing any more additional traffic, but the other building, quite frankly, will have to be occupied. So yes, his existing business simply is going to move here and it'll be the same thing. I mean, with with this type of a business and this type of a contractor, you get, you have people come to the building, pick up all of the materials, load up their trucks and then go. It's not a retail facility where you have people coming all day long, so that that high demand with regard to traffic isn't present.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Attorney Mann.
Thank you.
This is another article that we had delayed a vote on for the presentation. So do I have a motion for my colleagues?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move to recommend Article thirty-one, Citizens Petition, amend zoning bylaws, map eighteen, parcel thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Discussion? Any discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just as I pointed out at the special town meeting that we had to purchase the the turkey farm. You know, I certainly was in favor of the town purchasing it. Again, we had a majority there, but not a two thirds. But again, town meeting took action and therefore, you know, we did not become the owners of it. But I stated at that particular time that I took some solace in the fact that the intended purchaser was was Mr. Coviallo. A long-term resident of the community, active in the community, has his family has grown up and now living in. his family, his, his grown up and now living in, in, in the community. So he has a vested interest and is obviously sensitive to what the needs of the neighborhood and concerns of the neighbors are there. So again, as I stated at that particular point in time, you know, if we were going to partner with somebody, we, someone like Mr. Covialo. If we were going to be in supportive of something, it would be with someone like Mr. Covialo. So in that respect, uh um, I congratulate him on his purchase. I hope that his business continues to thrive and stay a north threading, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Any other um discussion of my colleagues?
Just one question, um, because I wasn't at the CPC meeting. Um, did you have local neighbors come to the meeting that uh opposed the plan?
Mr. Pierce?
Yes, we did. Um, we had one neighbor that, that opposed the plan um who had been there for, you know, uh, I think he said forty some odd years, had lived there. Which of course, that means, as this man pointed out, that when he moved there, it was heavy industrial. And then since then, we changed it to the IO district in order to um stop the heavy industrial and get something a little cleaner and quieter uses, which we eventually have done. If you sit down there now, there's a lot of much less intense uses, that a lot of the trucking company stuff is gone. So we, we basically accomplished our goal. But that was, that was, that was about it. And, and, and basically all of us, you know, well, most of us live in town. It was in someplace where I started out on a, on a dead-end street and it became a thoroughfare. So um, this is, this is progress in the town. In this particular case, I think this is a move in the right direction.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any other questions? Mr. Studo?
Um, I'd just like to say that um, I think uh, you know, to piggyback on uh, Mr. O'Leary, I do not know Mr. Covialo uh, as well personally, so I had asked around, but I, you know, all positive opinions. And also, um, you know, one thing I'll mention, because, you know, there, there's other projects as well where traffic has been a big thing and can be, you know, as much as I would love Mr. Covialo's business to get to the point where he does have as much flow as uh fifteen homes, because that would be awesome for our tax base. I mean, that's uh, that, that'd be one real big electrical office. I, I do agree that I think just taking a common sense approach from the traffic that, you know, fifteen homes, two cars per home, plus visitors, plus that. So again, I'd just like to mention that I, I, I have been in those CPC meetings and the, and the traffic question has come up a lot. And I just think that if you really just if you step back and take out the emotion and just look at the practical use of it, I mean, I, I don't really understand the question why, you know, it's a pretty simple thing where you know, just do the difference of what it could be. So um, I am in support of it. I just wanted to give that little tidbit that I've been trying to figure out how, how somebody, you know, can reasonably think that there'd be as much traffic as that. And, you know, again, it's a fair question, but once you think it through, you, you just, it really didn't make uh, you know, it didn't, it didn't add up. So um, I'd just like to give that, just after listening to it for a couple of months now.
If I, if I may, Madam Chair. There, there will um, you know, we'll do a traffic, still be a traffic study done, and we'll see if there are any recommendations necessary as far as you know, turns or, and how the, how the uh, how the driveway intersects with the roadway. That traffic study will be done in the, in the, in the process of the site plan review. We pretty much always do one, especially on commercial property. So so um, those questions of the answer have changes need to be made to make it work well. You'll be part of the plan.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Pierce, because this has to go through a public hearing process. This is just giving Mr. Covialo the opportunity to develop it as he would like to, as to why he purchased it. And and it's still going to go through additional hearing and review and vote in consideration for whatever the ultimate proposal is, with perhaps conditions if need be by the CPC. But with this, just in order for him to relocate his business, this zoning change has to happen there because it was a farm before this. So
That's true.
Um, and also, I, I would just echo what Mr. O'Leary and Mr. Studo said, and also appreciate the input of the CPC, but I think Mr. Covialo's been pretty upfront this entire process, this entire time that we took to look into the acquisition of the land, which of course the town meeting rules and town meeting didn't want us to acquire it. So I'm in favor of him being able to develop it as, as his, as his needs uh, are necessary. Obviously, of course, with it, with this, you know, public process review that it requires. And um, and also he knows the traffic flow already because his, his business isn't that far up the road from there, from what I understood during town meeting. So I think he's pretty familiar with the area. And like Mr. O'Leary said, he's li- he's lives here. He's lived here his whole, he knows how the area has changed. And he knows how, you know, what it was before and what it is now. So um, and I, I'd be, I'm in, I'm fully in favor of it as well, to letting him get, get it to where he wants it to. Get it, use it for the way he wants to use it. All right. Any other question? Mrs. Gonzalez?
I, I just wanted to a- agree with my colleagues. Um, I also was in favor of the town buying the turkey farm, um, supported that, but with it not going through, I feel we're pretty lucky to have Mr. Covialo the one to have it. And um, I fully support this too.
All right. Any other comments of my colleagues? So with that, I think we have a motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary and the motion, motion to recommend that town meeting. And we'll call the roll. Mr. O'Leary? Mr. Walner? Mr. Studo? Mrs. Gonzalez? And Manu Pelli is at Union, Mr. Recommended.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And we have the last article, I believe, relating to this, which um, if Ms. McKnight, I think it, we understand that the, that with this modification, there have to be some Hold on a second. Okay, there we go. All right. Thank you. Yes. Mrs. McKnight. Oh, actually, Mr. Gilbert, the last article, it's the last article that we're talking about, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great.
It would be an article to modify the zoning um bylaw, specifically the zoning map to reflect the zoning change contemplated in the citizens petition. My recommendation of the board would be to uh recommend in accordance with your previous vote.
Sure. Anything else, Mr. McKnight, you want to add to that?
Uh, no. The only reason to go ahead with this article is if Article thirty-one passes. Um, if it doesn't pass, there will be no need for this article.
All right. So uh, let me see if there's any questions. And I see none. And I see none in the chat room. That is a previous question that was already answered. Okay, so what is the board's pleasure with respect to Article thirty-two? Mr. Studo? Do Mr. O'Leary have a motion?
I think we'd have to wait to see what town meeting action is. Recommend a town meeting, which is where we have it.
All right. So not, no further vote on it.
Because that says the previous article requires a two-thirds vote, right? Change in the zoning bylaw. Yeah, so it requires two-thirds.
Okay. Which we know from experience is tough to get. All right. So that, this concludes the informational hearing. All right. See no further questions or comments. We'll move on. Thank you for um, everyone that attended and participated with. That was very helpful. Uh, we'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Gilbertoff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, um, I have a limited report this evening, which is just to issue a friendly reminder that we do have seasonal uh water use um restrictions in effect. It's voluntary water conservation for outdoor water use um here in town. Um, you know, we are seeing, again, very high demand uh for water, um, especially in the past couple of weeks. The Water Department is managing that, um, you know, for the time being, but we're going to continue to be monitoring that use. So I'm not here asking for any change in the restriction at this point in time, but uh, we will be putting out some information, just advising folks that we do have voluntary water conservation um, in effect here in town at this time of year. Uh, other than that, that concludes, uh, concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. We will do board member reports. Oh, Mr. O'Leary, did you have a question?
I had a question in relation to um, the loosening of restrictions. Uh, and again, we're, we're opening up town hall. Uh, what are we, what is the administration doing in relation to employees that are vaccinated and non-vaccinated? And how are we going to be monitoring and ensuring that our employees are safe? Uh, the uh public is safe? And uh, what, what are we doing moving forward?
Through you, Madam Chair. Um, we have continued to have, first, for those of you who've been in the building over the past year, you see the changes that we've made, um, particularly to the offices that did not previously have customer service windows. Um, we have installed temporary um type setup, setups for um customer service, including here in, in this office using Plexiglas as well as some permanent insulation that's been made, particularly in the uh town clerks and the building slash DPW departments. Um, we've also instituted some changes to access in the smaller areas. Um, we've thinned out some of the office space that uh was more densely staffed. We did that last fall, and the intention is to keep that in place uh, moving forward. Um, we also do uh, and continue to follow the requirements for um masks being worn indoors. And that's something that we'll be looking at based on whatever guidance comes out over the next few days for the future. Uh, in terms of vaccinations, uh, we are not instituting any sort of uh requirement for employees to be vaccinated at this point in time. Um, you know, we've had uh, you know, some conversation about it, but, but feel that, you know, the number of steps that we put in place with the additional cleaning and sanitizing that we're doing, the hand wash stations. Um, that, you know, that we have steps in place that would, would address that. But, you know, at this stage in time, we're not uh, not intending to issue any sort of requirement for uh, for, for vaccinations amongst uh, among employees. You know, I did have some conversation with our uh, you know, town council and with my, my colleagues in surrounding communities, and it would appear that uh that's pretty consistent feedback from what I'm hearing from other communities as well. Um, you know, that they're really focusing on the, the safety component of it, but uh, you know, not requiring any sort of vaccination to take place. So that, that's where things stand right now, um, in terms of our intent. And you know, we're obviously monitoring things as, as additional guidance comes out.
Madam Chair.
Mr. O'Leary?
How do we know, are we, are we requiring uh non-vaccinated employees to wear masks?
So right now, our requirements for masks in the building um have not changed since where they were at in um December, January. Folks are required to put on their masks when they leave their desk, even within the offices, um, certainly in the public areas um, as well. Um, you know, look, you know, are there instances where multiple vaccinated people are together and by agreement, you know, they're, they're taking their masks down. I'm not going to sit here and say that that's not happening. But um, you know, that's being, I, I, I'm, I'm confident that that's happening only to the extent that all the parties involved might be, be comfortable. But in terms of our policies here, you know, when an employee is leaving their desk, we are asking them to put on their masks, and employees have been very good and very patient with that. Um, to the extent where there was a point in time when they were required to wear a mask at their desk and, and they were willing to do that. So I feel like we've got a pretty good routine and regiment that's working here. And, you know, things have gone very well over the past couple of weeks. So the past, the past week with Rivera allowing the public in, um, and that, that we are, you know, we're well positioned here.
But I, my question was, are we, the, the people who are not vaccinated, the recommendation is that they wear masks. So, and again, do we know what the, you know, what, how many people are vaccinated, how are not? I mean, we have an obligation, obviously, to our employees and to the general public. I mean, we're an employer. Employers can put restrictions in place, mandate restrictions in place to protect other employees. Do we have an interest in protecting our employees? And what steps are we taking to do that?
So I, 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 again, I, I, we've had the same mask requirement in place. We're not
I, I know what the current is, but we're talking about moving forward because things are loosening up. That's
Hold on, but Madam Chair, can I just ask a question, Mr. O'Leary? I'll ask for you. Are you going to mandate vaccine passports to get into town hall? Enough dancing around him, Mr. O'Leary.
I'm just asking what, again, I'm asking what, what the plan is moving forward, because I, I don't know what it is.
No, no, uh, hang on, hang on, folks. Hang on, folks. We're not going to talk over one another. It's already difficult enough. Hang on, hang on, folks.
Madam Chair, can I speak?
All right, Mr. Mr. O'Leary's, right now, Mr. O'Leary is asking Mr. Gilberto some questions about the report. So, Mr. O'Leary, I don't hear that your question's been answered.
I don't believe my question has been answered. Again, I know what the
And, and then we can have follow, everyone's going to have an opportunity. So everyone can have a follow-up, but go ahead, Mr. O'Leary.
I just, I said, I know what the current standards are, what's been in place. What I'm asking is, moving forward as an employer, you know, we have a right, first of all, but an obligation to protect our employees. What is the protocol that's going to be in place to require or not require non-vaccinated individuals to wear a mask?
So you're asking when non-vaccinated individuals come into town hall, will they be required to wear a mask?
But no, 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 no. Employees are employees, are non-vaccinated employees. Are they going to be required to wear a mask?
So, so for the time being, we're not expecting to, to, to make any change to the mask requirement. So
So in turn, in other words, internally, th- they'll still be wearing masks. Employees will still be wearing masks.
Unless they are at their workstation. Right, right now, we're, we're not intending to, to make that change. Um, you know, we'll, we'll watch, we'll watch as things develop over the coming weeks. But right now, our intention is to maintain the same mask requirement we've had going back to December, January.
Okay.
That folks who are at their desk do not have to wear a mask regardless of whether they're vaccinated or not. But everybody, when they stand up and leave their desk, is asked to put a mask on.
Okay. Does that answer the question, Mr. O'Leary? That's not going to, that, although the, all the restrictions are ended, that's not going to end the requirement for, for personnel. They're going to wear the masks in the building.
They're being
For their own protection and for the protection of the general public.
Uh, what I heard was they're going to be asked to do so. So again, as a, as a work requirement, as an employer, are we going to be requiring them to do it rather than asking them to do it?
I don't anticipate changing the requirement in the near future. And right now, they're required to wear their masks when they leave their desks. And as I previously indicated, you know, I don't want to misrepresent it. There are instances where multiple vaccinated folks agree to be in the same room and not have a mask on, but that happens voluntarily. And I would say that it's not common. Because it's not often that folks are in that type of a meeting space.
And then my other question was, are you aware as to how many people are vaccinated and are not?
Uh, I can tell you that we haven't polled our employees, but a number of them were involved in um, in either operating the clinics and were vaccinated in the course of that. Um, or were uh able to access, that, we're aware that they showed up to be vaccinated because they had access here. But in terms of an exact number, I don't have that number.
Percentage? I mean, I, again, do, do we have a handle on it? I have, I have no idea.
I, I, again, I, we haven't polled our employees on it. Um, you know.
Allow to poll your employees on that?
You're not. And I got a lot of attorneys with a lot more experience than anybody here that if they want to challenge him tomorrow, I'll pay for the thousand dollar not-rephone call. They can tell you directly.
Okay, Mr. Studo, we're getting some information, okay? Everybody needs to stay, stay calm, cool, and collected here. Mr. O'Leary's just asking questions. Mr. Gilberto's just giving answers. And there's really no need for you to hire a lawyer, even though you have a right to hire a lawyer if you need to. But we're just trying to get some information here. But Mr. Gilbert, I wouldn't think you'd be allowed to ask that ask of your staff that, that kind of information, unless they volunteer it to you.
We, we may be able to survey them, you know, informally, but even that, I don't know.
Yeah, you'd have to ask them, just like with the mask requirement, you'd have to ask them. It's up to you to, yeah, respond to it.
But Madam Chair, it's my understanding that as an employer, you can require non-vaccinated people to either wear masks, you know, or get vaccinated, or you can actually require them to get vaccinated. You, you can require it. Everything that I've been reading, everything that's been said, employers have the right to require their employees to be vaccinated.
I, I don't, I don't think that's what Mr. Gilberto's doing. Do that, because I, I think he would, he definitely would have to hire a lawyer to get a, a legal opinion as to whether Do that, because I I think he would, he definitely would have to hire a lawyer to get a legal opinion as to whether or not that's appropriate.
We have, we have town council that can give us that opinion.
To Gilberto.
No, to that issue, we did, there is guidance that's been developed by our our town council. Which goes back to December, and it does indicate that there is inability to to have a mandate. But there, there was also a pretty involved process with regard to allowing exemptions for it. Making sure that we're accommodating employees and protecting their privacy as well. So it certainly is not something that that is straightforward. But you know, I could tell you from just the conversations here, it's not something that we felt that we need to pursue at this point in time based on what we hope to initiate or continue or to continue to implement for the safety requirements, the masks, the cleaning. Trying to maintain a social distancing, you know, to the extent that we can, which has worked fairly well for us in the town hall over the past year or so.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, Mr. O'Leary?
No, I may have comment after.
Okay. Miss, Mr., Miss, Mrs. Gonzalez. Any questions, comments, any questions of the COVID nineteen update?
I just want to clarify the fact that everything that's in place has been working all along. Correct, Mr. Gilberto? And I mean, you're saying you're going to keep it as is. People are six feet apart. They're wearing that mask if they leave their, their desk. I I don't see what the issue is.
Madam Chair, yeah, so yes, our our intention is to maintain those those safety protocols for the time being, you know, and in my sitting here saying that we're going to keep them forever, no. No, really, I think the next window that we expect to look at is expanding those walk in hours to match the the regular town, town hall schedule. You know, and we're looking to see whether that's something that makes sense for us to do next week or whether we need a little bit more time. But short of the other requirements, I don't see them, you know, I don't see them changing, you know, in the in the near future.
Miss, any other questions, Mrs. Gonzalez? No, no. Okay, Mr. Walter.
Um, I'll just say it's a, I think it's an emerging question. I think it's a difficult question. And it's something that'll have to be worked through, and I think many people are struggling with the same question. So I it's just, we're just not there yet. I think it's fair that the people that have got the vaccines at some point want to lose their mask because they they've gone through that effort. So that's why I see the rub coming in is that at some point they feel protected, they feel like they're not going to give it to anybody else, and they want to take their mask off, and so they should. You know, I feel like they should be able to do that. But again, just a little bit too early right now to know what to do. So I think Michael's in a difficult situation. I hope our Board of Health chimes in. And I hope that best practices will be established in other places soon enough as we move forward, because I think it's, I think there's there's never going to be a great answer to this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walner. Mr. Studo?
Uh, just a couple of things. First, my apologies, Mr. O'Leary, for chiming in. It's a heated subject, so, you know. But I would like to, I I feel like we for this, just my only comment, is that we got to take reference from somewhere. Um, there was a great article over the weekend, "The White House is Now Full of Hugs." No one in the White House wears a mask anymore. Guests are not being asked, employees are not being asked. This is all on on CNN and any website. So meaning that if we take direction from the top, and I don't know what they're going to do at the state. But so far, the highest level of government, they are, I mean, they are about a ten steps ahead of Mr. Gilberto in North Reading. So, and the other reason too is to me, from the time I've been on this board, and it's just relevant to this issue, I've been told you really got to represent yourself, not your people, not like the people, not yourself. So for me personally, and I'll talk to everybody. I spoke to seven different business owners in North Reading. Now, one of them is even sniffing mask mandate, and I know a private business can do what they want, but to me, if we take the direction of the people of North Reading and maybe my demographic, and this is business owners, so that's different. But to me, and from what I'm hearing, like, I think if you trust the science and you're vaccinated, someone unvaccinated can't get you sick, and if you want to run the risk unvaccinated, then that's your prerogative. So I'll just keep it at that, that again, if we trust the science and we see what's going on at other levels of government, this is really going to be a moot point. And we can beat it down. I mean, and again, it is my opinion only, but to me, come Saturday, the twenty ninth, I think that the town needs to start justifying why they're going above and beyond the state. Not just saying, we're going to do it. Abundance of caution is not going to work anymore, starting next week, in my opinion. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gilberto, I guess you have a couple of different schools of thought, but it is good to hear that the employees are of their own volition, abiding by the requests that you're making, and I, you haven't given us an update. There have been many instances of transmission personnel to personnel, and of course, we do all share the same concern of when the building opens to the public, making sure our personnel are protected as well, but I mean, it's good for you to keep us updated and where where you're going with that. We do, we do have a high level of trust that you'll modify things as you need to. In respecting people's privacy as well. So thank you for the update. So now let's move on to the next order of business, which is the board member reports, and we kind of do board member reports and all the new business together. So, Mr. O'Leary, you kick it off for us.
Well, if someone asked us to whether or not the the Board of Health should be weighing in on this, I actually attended the Board of Health meeting the other evening and broached the subject, their biggest concern in relation to town employees and the requirements and whether being an employer. The first thing that they were concerned about is that, first of all, they didn't want to be the ones who who had to police it, and you know, nor should they be, you know. But they would obviously like to see best practices, you know, put into place. And if the administration would like an opinion of them based upon what they're doing, they will opine. If they're not going to offer an opinion at this particular point in time, because as other people pointed out, this you know, a whole host of schools of thought, you know, and but again, to me, again, as an employer, we have an obligation to our employees as a public service organization and town government, we have an obligation to protect the public. And, you know, for those that are not are choosing not to get vaccinated, you know, they're putting other people at risk and and themselves in particular. And again, as far as, you know, vaccinated people, you know, can't get sick, that's not true. As the, I mean, what they do, they can still test positive until still transmitted, ask the New York Yankees. They've got several cases where they've tested positive, they've all been vaccinated, and they would be carrying. So for the unvaccinated people, that too is a risk. So again, I I think as an employer, we have an obligation that don't appears in my mind, my opinion, to be meeting, but again, town administrator is in charge. Enough said on that. Relation to the rest of the Board of Health, again, they've as the town administrator pointed out earlier in his report COVID update, they've been working with the school department in relation to voluntary vaccinations and coordinating with the school department and the vendor, which again is a wonderful thing, and apparently, a lot of people have already agreed to sign up and participate. They're also working very hard in facilitating the opening of the brewery. You know, there was an issue in relation to the vats and the effluent that it creates and should it be in the septic system or not, and they got guidance from the state and worked with the owners of the property, and that's been worked out, and the plans have been approved, and that's moving forward. So we'll have our newest restaurant up and running shortly, I hope. So again, I want to appreciate the the health agent and the Board of Health moving expeditionally. They had up to forty five days to to respond to the the plans that were submitted, and they did it, you know, inside of a week. So kudos to them for assisting local businesses and getting up and running. Because somewhat of an aside, members of the Board of Health, not per se, the Board of Health, this is just public service announcement, the board members should be made aware, is that there's going to be an effort to be made to expand playground area in Institute River Park in memory of Martin Fair, longtime health, health agent. Who had been here for probably close to thirty, thirty five years, who passed away suddenly and unexpectedly shortly after he retired from here, and members of the Board of Health and people who knew Martin well, wanted to do something to honor him so that there will be some efforts being put forth to raise some money to buy some new playground equipment added at Institute River Park in memory of Martin. So board members, please be aware that this is going to be coming up and supportive as you can. Other than that, well said, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walner?
Yeah, two things. One is the study that we did in the fall with the for the, sorry, I'm not feeling very well tonight, so I'm kind of stumbling on my words, try to do it again. The AARP Age Friendly Initiative for Town, we had like thirteen, fourteen hundred people that participated in that, including a lot of people in our town government, you know, key people, things like that. We're going to be seeing the results on Thursday for our first look. So this is with the new mass gerontology. They're actually nationally renowned for being leaders in this effort, and and so it's really going to be exciting to see what comes from that meeting. Jen Ford, who's our youth director, is interestingly involved with this, as is Catherine McCabe Scott, who's a volunteer, and myself. So we'll be seeing that, and we're not sure if we'll report on the results during the summer or early fall, depending on what we see for information, but it'll be exciting to see the results and see how the town overall feels about this initiative. Second thing, indulge, let me indulge myself just a little bit here, and I think you'll support it. Tomorrow is the one year anniversary of the murder of George Floyd. It's important that we recognize that, but it's also important to recognize that what the town has done from a positive point of view. So as you may recall, very early, there was a public demonstration organized by the newly formed Hornets Against Hate. And a few of our select board members attended. And we were in support of this type of initiative, you know, making social change, recognizing our part to do what we can possibly do. And so that got started, and one of the things that didn't change as a result of that was the police department, and the reason why I point out the police department is because we never had to defund or reallocate their their budget. They had already done proactive things like bringing in mental health counselors, like bringing in the officer into the high school and middle school to work with the youth and to have a mental health counselor and drug counselor on hand as well. So our police department is way ahead of us as far as social change is concerned. But what have we, what have we done over the last year that's that's notable? There is a Hornets Against Hate, which has provided a platform for people to talk about these type of things. There's another group called the Human Rights Group that has done book studies and even has been bringing in has been consulting with other towns about initiatives they've been doing and pouring that over to the library. The library, as a result, is taking a more aggressive action and providing education to the town that wasn't happening a year ago. And we've seen much more people getting involved, especially more recently with the challenges to the election, where people have started speaking up about how they feel about racial issues, how they feel about these things. And I think it's pretty fairly overwhelming, whether you look at the letters, the editor, especially more recent ones, or look at social media, is that most people really do feel that North Reading is a good town that treats people well, but also is willing to do the hard work to get better at what they're doing. So I think it's good news. I know there's been recent people who have been very uncomfortable with change. That's inherent in our world, but I think overall, I'm very proud of what the town has done. And I think it's, would escape us not to recognize that in the high school, they have changed school policy to take a more assertive stance on creating racial equity. And they created a new, a new group, which was the Racial Activism Club. And that was founded by a person named Shivi Shringhop, that I hope I pronounced her last name right. She's the founder junior and founder, and by the way, she has been consulting with people like the Human Rights Group and the Hornets Against Hate. So, you know, this is really, I've said, I've always thought is, how do you wake people up in our town when everything's been going okay and we don't have to think about these things? Our kids are thinking about it, and they're active in thinking about it, and they're, they want to be engaged on this. And this is really where efforts are, should be directed to. And so if the, the chair will allow me to, I'd love to play the PSA that they won. In Massachusetts, they wanted, they did a PSA, it was compared against sixty other contributions. It's only a minute long, minute and nineteen seconds long. And if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to play for the town to hear, and and then I'll let Mike and and my report, so it's all positive news.
Sure. Do you share your, share your screen or?
Yeah, can we do that?
Is it a video or an audio?
It's a video, yeah, it's just, it's just a minute long and
You should be authorized to share your screen. If you look in the bottom center.
I see it, and I'll run it right now. And thanks for your indulgence. I appreciate it. Can you see it?
Not yet.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
I'll start again, sorry. There we go.
Anger and frustration will plant the seeds of change.
But empathy and love will make the garden flourish.
We are students and we are here to learn and grow, to change the world.
We go to school with the hope of finding ourselves, our passions and our talents.
But so few of us have the opportunity to do this now.
In twenty eleven, only fifty seven percent of our Black peers, our fellow students, had access to advanced math and science classes in school.
And nearly all have experienced and continue to experience systemic bias in their education.
But students of color are not supposed to be.
And we stand together with our peers across the nation, whose diverse voices and minds have put them in the face of injustice.
We share their sorrows, their anger, their frustration, and we shield with them our love, our peace, and a promise to do better, to make change.
Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walner. All right. Well, that's a tough act to follow. All right, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Oh, thank you.
You, you go next.
Thank you. Um, yeah. I'll talk about the Putnam Property Committee. And they are tying up loose ends and and made the have done a great job of meeting and getting things going so that they can spend the money that they were allotted at town meeting. So they can start fixing up the properties over there, and I think we all look forward to that. Hopefully, hopefully by Apple Fest, we'll see some progress today. And Apple Fest, I believe, is on. So that'll be a nice opportunity to hopefully see some progress with the, with the house, with the houses there, so.
Get back to normal.
What is normal, Madam?
We forgot.
And I I'm just going to weigh in on the whole mask thing myself and 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 I I I feel very much the same as Mr. Studo does. I believe that, you know, once once the masks are not required anymore, I really don't see how you tell some people that they have to wear them and other people that they don't. The science tells you that if you're vaccinated, you're protected. If you have chosen not to be vaccinated for whatever personal reasons you might have, they could be health reasons, they could be advised by a doctor. You're the one at risk, not anyone else. So if you choose to wear a mask, that would be your choice. I don't think people should be treated like lepers. So that's just my opinion that I would like to weigh in for Mr. Gilberto, who's gonna have some tough decisions to make, and there are a lot of opinions out there, so. That's mine. So I will.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Studo?
So, it is an obvious thing. My whole board member report is about business and the business of North Reading. I'm going to stick to that. So it's about an EDC update. As everyone knows, or I've mentioned a couple of times, we are we're holding an event. It's the Tuesday after the town meeting, which I we're holding an event, it's the Tuesday after the town meeting, which I believe is June 8th. I'm sorry, I, I keep confusing the dates. But it's, we have some advertising, you may, we're gonna have some billboards. It's really great, we're already getting a great response from the businesses. Like I said, almost every business that like we've talked to between me and the other EDC members, I mean, are ecstatic that starting this Saturday, it's, you know, unless otherwise, they get told, they're gonna act like it is normal. I mean, the restrictions are gone. So I think it's very, it's a great time where, I think if you remember a couple of months ago, I go, hey, we're gonna take this gamble to try to put this event on, and let's hope things are, you know, the data keeps getting better, and it, it worked out better than we even expected. So that's great. So what I would like to ask the board is, tell any business owners, especially, I have to rely on, I mean, everyone here has been in town a lot longer than me, so I know a lot of, I, I, I think I know a lot of business owners, and I'll talk to Mr. O'Leary for five minutes, and I'm like, oh, I didn't know those 100 people. So it's like, you know, I would implore you to, you know, get these people there. I think it's gonna be a great event, you're, you're gonna get some great ideas. You know, and again, it's something where we're sensing the excitement on the EDC, but it's something where I know that, you know, everybody, you know, if everybody on this board made five to 10 calls, we could even have an even better event. So, you know, it's, we, that's, that's the extent of my board member report at this point. Nothing from CPC, you already heard it all during the Warren article. So, you know, other than that, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, excuse me?
I have a question for Mr. Studo about that. For the EDC event, if we're gonna tell business people about it, do they have to RSVP in a certain way?
Oh, yes, thank you very much, yes. So the RSVP is to either Diane McKnight or Lisa Egan from the chamber, or even me, or anyone here, right? I mean, anyone you think that can get in touch with the EDC. Yeah, and the RSVP is, the date is the 4th.
Danielle McKnight.
Yeah.
Danielle, is that what I said? What did I say?
Danielle. But it is getting late.
Danielle, no, no, I'm, yeah, sorry, Danielle McKnight. My apologies there. My apologies to Danielle, who's not on, I'll have to text her tomorrow. So, so yes, but there is a good question. There is an RSVP to June 4th, and like a lot of these things, I know everyone likes to wait last minute, but I swear, if you RSVP yes, and then you don't make it, no one's gonna send you a bill. So if you have some interest, please let us know.
Okay, thank you. And just from the chair, I just want to thank Senator Tarr and Representative Jones and the Housing and Economic Development Secretary, Mike Caneely, and the Energy and Environmental Secretary, Kathleen Theoretis. We had visits with them last week. We met at Colleen Perry's, at Brusanti, Colleen Perry's. Well, first part of the day, we met with Secretary Caneely at, at Colleen's business to talk to us about how COVID-19 has impacted her business and how she's sort of revamped things. And then we went to Pat Lee's, of course, who hosted us for coffee and discussion, a great round table with Secretary Caneely to really just discuss all of these, the lifting of the restrictions and moving forward and some ideas with regard to funding and grants and just trying to help businesses get back on their feet again. So that was a very helpful visit. And both Senator Tarr and Representative Jones also joined us for a walk-through Ipswich River Park that afternoon with Secretary Theoretis regarding some funding that's available. So we got to show her the, you know, the lay of the land there, the areas that are, you know, being enjoyed by the public. We were also actually joined by Ashley Stolba, she's the undersecretary of community development, the early part of the day. So we just appreciate their effort, they're making North Reading part of their day and part of their focus. And, and will be working to try to get some more focus in on those issues in the future. And that's, that was a hopefully productive meetings and seemed to be productive with the business owners. So we just appreciate the time they took to spend with us and appreciate Senator Tarr and Representative Jones' time as well. And with that, we will end, motion to adjourn. And, I mean, we can still keep talking.
No, no, motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Mr. O'Leary? Mr. Walner?
Hi.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Minnie Pully is aye.